Good afternoon. Due to COVID-19, Committee of Adjustment public hearings are being conducted virtually by electronic means through WebEx Webinar, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx Webinar, which is moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone. All participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Today, Committee of Adjustment is offering attendees the option to appear by video. Those attendees that have registered in advance to attend by video will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five minutes allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as an attendee. Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Members of the public and applicants are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist's role if you fail to respect this instruction. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on as the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Hadnotchoni, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone in attendance today who wishes to receive a copy of the decision of the committee must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. The hearing procedure. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note, the committee may not entertain provisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committeeing members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Are there any declarations of interest of panel or staff for the items in the afternoon time slots? Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, have you received any requests for deferral?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have four deferrals for this afternoon, but they are items that are scheduled for 3:30 or 4:30 time slots, so that's item number 33, 21 Heathdale Road; item number 34, which is 71 Robert Street; item 38, which is 74 Rathnally Avenue; and item 39, 8 Woody Crest Avenue. And there are no files to be closed this afternoon.
All right, the first item is 21 11 Currie Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a new enclosed front porch with a new front yard open platform and stairs, a rear yard stairs, and a rear yard basement window well. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, email correspondence from Community Planning, and a 37 signature petition in support from addresses on Currie Avenue and Hanson Avenue.
Mei, you've been unmuted.
Hi. Good afternoon, Committee Chair and members of committee. My name is Mei Luong. I'm the agent for the property owner at 11 Currie Avenue. I am a land use planner. In terms of this application, would you like me to...
Can you, Ms. Luong, can you give us your address, please?
Yes. I reside at 77 Sarah Ashbridge Avenue in Toronto.
Okay. I don't, Ms. Luong, I think this is reasonably straightforward. I don't think we need a presentation, but if you want to say something to the panel before we go into committee, please go ahead.
Sure. Thank you very much. The only thing I would like to say is that we did receive the comments and the one condition from planning staff, and we accept the condition, which only relates to variances to regarding a front yard setback.
Okay. Thank you. Panel, do you have any questions? Comments? Do we have a motion? Nimrod.
Yeah, there's only two variances before us, and they are minor in nature. I would move approval, subject to conditions from Community Planning.
We have a secondor. Sahir, all in favor? You have your approval. Thank you. Number 22, 2 Marygold Avenue. And the purpose of this application, to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a front ground floor addition and reconstructing the front porch and stairs. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, email correspondence from Community Planning, a report from Toronto and Region Conservation Authority, and correspondence in support from two addresses on Marygold. Mr. Sprague.
This is Tom Sprague, Sprague &amp; Company Architects. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. Okay. And our address is 156 Duncan Mill Road here in Toronto, Sprague &amp; Company Architects. Very brief background of this application, I just wanted to make sure the, on the variances before that were sent out in the letter, there were three variances, and the second one was a typo, and I don't know if staff have advised you, but it really should read the second, the minimum required side yard setback is .45 meters, and then down below it specifies the sideline. So I don't know if they advised you of that change, but that's what it should be. And of course, the front yard setback is number one, variance number one.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We can make that revision.
Okay.
Yeah, but sent through, and but maybe you haven't been advised, but that would be the correct way it should be worded on that. Just very briefly, again, the owners would like some additional space at the front and under the porch. Interestingly enough, on the street, there's many other examples of people who've done exactly the same as what's being proposed here. There is a, and I've sent photos through, which hopefully you had a chance to look at, so you can see the existing situation, and what we're doing really matches exactly the similar projects in the immediate area. In fact, the nine houses to the north all have, are closed in. Yeah, there's some photos that were sent in as part of that. You also have two, just acknowledgements from the two immediate neighbors, that they're not opposed at all. And my, just my last comment was, there was a memo I saw in a file from planning, and they'd like to make a conditional on substantially in accordance with our drawings at the front, and that would be fine, to make that as a, as a condition of a decision that would be tied into substantially in accordance with the drawings that you do see before you. Just in summary, my feeling is, what's proposed here is, is minor, in my opinion, and certainly a reasonable, reasonable development.
All right. Thank you. Panel, any questions? Comments? Do we have a motion? Sahir.
Thank you, Chair. Pardon me, this, this application again is very straightforward, and apart from the Community Planning correspondence, I believe there's nothing else that would prevent us from approving this application, so I move to approve.
Secondor. Oh, plot, a subject, Sahir, to the, that's planning report condition?
That's right. And I'm not sure if we want you to add that little correction or amendment that the...
Just say, as amended.
As amended. As amended, correct.
Secondor. Aaron, all in favor? You have your approval. Thank you, sir. Number 23, 857 Coxwell Avenue. Purpose of the application, to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a two-story side and rear addition, a complete second-story addition, and a rear ground level deck with a basement walkout. With this application, we have, we have material submitted by the applicant, a report from Urban Forestry, support from 859 Coxwell Avenue, and nine form letters in support from properties on Coxwell and Fairside. Leo Mastandrea.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Leo Mastandrea. I'm the agent for the owner at 85 Coxwell, and we're here today for these minor variances, which we submitted nine letters of support from the surrounding neighbors. Community Planning has no concerns, and I believe this is consistent with the approvals that, in the area, and the build form.
All right. Thank you.
If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Okay. Panel, any questions? Comments? Yes, Sahir.
Just a question with regard to the proposed parking pad in the rear. The materials that will be used, will they be permeable?
If you would like them, yes, we could do it permeable.
Yeah, I think that might be a good condition to have. Thank you.
No problem.
All right. Any other questions? We have a motion? Sahir, you want to make a motion?
Yes, certainly. Thank you. I'd like to move approval of, of this application, subject to two conditions. One is that the proposed parking pad is produced out of permeable materials, and there's a forestry number two condition.
All right. Do we have a secondor? Aaron, all in favor? You have your approval. Thank you, sir. Number 24, 114 Wynette Avenue. The purpose of this application, to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a two-story rear addition, a rear basement walkout, and a rear ground floor deck. With this application, we have only material submitted by the applicant. Marco Viera.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, committee members. My name is Marco Viera. I'm the agent and the designer for this application.
Yes, can we have your address, sir?
At 257 Dunraven Drive.
Okay. So this looks relatively straightforward. We, before we go into committee, do you have anything you want to say to the panel?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, I think the application is pretty straightforward. We do have five variances, very closely, and trying to comply with all the requirements. I feel that it's very minor, and I ask the committee to approve.
Thank you. Panel, any questions? Yes, Sahir.
Just a quick one again. I noticed on the site, well, I think it's variance number four or five, related to soft landscaping in the rear. Is that as a result of the rear deck construction? And if so, what, what materials do you have below the, the deck?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The deck is to be treated wood. Below the deck is just going to be a gravel base. There is no concrete, so you just can't use the area of the deck for the soft landscaping calculation.
But it's porous.
Yeah, it is porous, and we'll be able to, you know, proper drainage within our lot.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any comments or a motion? Yes, Nimrod.
I believe that the variances are minor in nature, and I would move approval with no conditions.
Secondor, Sahir, all in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you. Number 25, 62 Parkdale Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing three-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear extension to the third-story dormer for additional habitable space, also to convert the dwelling from two units to one unit. And with this, we have material submitted by the applicant. Evan Torrens.
Hello, speaking. Yeah, hello, my name is Evan Torrens. I'm the agent for the owners of 62 Parkdale Road. My address is 87 Wade Avenue, Unit 306.
Okay. Thank you. This looks very straightforward and minor. Do you have anything to say before we go into committee?
Just, just as to how the maximum floor spacing that's just calculated, there was a note made on the zoning bylaw notice. It's a kind of a unique property because it's high up on a, somewhat of a hill, and so, and the calculation made by the reviewer, they included the basement, which may be FSI, appears though it's far higher than what would be typical. So, if, given that the basement wasn't included in that calculation, if the basement wasn't included, we would have an existing of 0.9, and we're proposing 0.97, roughly a 7.7% increase. So, that's just important to know.
Okay. Thank you. All right, panel, any questions? Comments? Do we have, Nimrod?
Yeah, I'd like to put forward a motion. The variances are minor, and the addition is very small, and as the applicant indicated, the, if you don't include the, the basement, the FSI, you know, is just slightly larger. So I would move approval with no conditions.
All right, secondor, Sahir, all in favor? You have your approval. Thank you, sir. Next application is number 26, 3001 Dundas Street West. Purpose of this application is to convert the existing one-story building, a place of worship, into a five-story mixed-use building for upgrade commercial space and a total of 14 residential dwelling units. The altered building will include the construction of a complete four-story addition, second to the fifth story, a rear integral garage for two parking spaces and a green rooftop patio. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, and we have correspondence from transportation. Aaron Gillard.
Thank you, members of the committee. Can you hear me okay?
No, it would be good if you spoke into the mic a little more, I think. We, you're just...
Okay, let me just take my headset off.
Is that a little bit better?
That's much better. Thank you. So let us have your name and your address.
I just need to switch my audio settings here.
Apologies, I'm just still having some issues connecting. Members of the committee, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Is this okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So thank you very much, Aaron Gillard, AMG Group Inc., 67 Cothers, Preston, and Allison. I can entertain the committee with a presentation if you'd like. Otherwise, I'd just like to say that the application, in terms of the variances, the building height variance is mainly due to the elevator shaft, which makes the variances seem larger. We do have a green roof, rooftop patio, which is why the variance requested for building height is actually approximately seven meters. Without that, the building is only 16 meters in height, so a variance of 2.15 meters would be requested. There is no other windows or residential space included on the upper level, so issues related to privacy, peering, and that kind of thing are omitted. Additionally, one of the variances is a bit of an anomaly. We would like to have a rental space for the superintendent that will run the building in the basement, and as such, there's a variance requested for that. And I can take you through the rest of the presentation, or we can answer questions as needed.
Well, there's someone else on the line. I, I suggest that unless the panel has some questions right now, we go to the other party and come back to you if there's any issues.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay. Panel, any questions? Okay, Zora Lukovic.
See you next time.
Hello?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Very good. I, I am an next-door neighbor on the east side of the building.
All right. Can we have your name and your actual address?
Absolutely. It's Zerica, Z-O-R-I-C-A, Lukovic, L-U-K-O-V-I-C. I am at 2995 Dundas Street West.
Okay. Can we have your comments?
I would like to know about the minor variance. These are more, most of them are more than half of the permitted. So I would like to know, because I'm on the east side, I would like to know, what is he going to do on my side? Is he going to go five and a half meters setback? Or is he going to do exactly the same as he's doing to the west side, which is 90 millimeters?
Well, if there's nothing...
Nine meters. That was just less than a meter.
If there's nothing there on that side, that means that he's, he complies with the zoning bylaw. If there's no variance asked for on your side, there's compliance with the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, well, I can ask the guy, is he going to put any windows on that side, or he's going to be just next to my property without my property line?
Well...
There is also an easement, there is also an easement included. I have stairs coming up. That, I didn't see anything on, on the plan, and I, well, I don't have a detailed plan anyway. I would like to know, because I do have a, you know, I would like to see what's going on there. If the gentleman can answer to me, I would be, I would appreciate. And do you also call a minor variance, when you have 14 meters permitted, and you go over 21 meters? On each, on each subject, on each number one to six, I have, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Number one, it is maximum permitted floor space is two and a half, which is 1,020 meters, 45 centimeters. He goes 1, 1.3, that's over 3,000 square feet more than permitted. Number two. Number two is over 5,000 square meters permitted. Number three, there are 15 parking spaces. He only has, he only would have two. What are we going to be, now we have a really bad situation, what are we going to do afterwards? I have, I have apartments, and I provide, you know, parking for my tenants. What's going to happen there? You as a city also have to give me an answer. Number four. Okay. Number four is, as I said, seven meters, seven meters maximum height. It's four, it's, it's seven meters over the, the permitted maximum height. That's quite a lot. That's really, that's a lot. The fifth one, I did not get, let's go to sixth, and I will ask about fifth. The sixth one is opening, yeah, windows opening to the west side. He's supposed to be off, hold on, setback five and a half meters from the lot line, and he's going to be only 90, less than a meter, 90 centimeters. That's, oh my God, that's really a lot. And I would like to know, if you could tell me what's going to happen with the east wall? If the, that, which my, my building is next to it. And I, I also, you never mentioned any, there is an easement, as I said. On the, number five, it's a, it's a mixed building, and then he's going to residential, and then he goes up and down of, is he going to have commercial at the top, like offices also? Or what's going on? And I would like to know if it's the, the top, the, the roof terrace, is it above this, this measurement, that's above the 21 meters, or is it included in? So I have lots of questions.
Is that it?
So far, yes.
Mr. Gillard?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Can you...
I can absolutely respond to these, no problem. Thank you very much.
Yes.
I was just waiting for the opportunity.
Yes.
So as relates to our neighbors' comments, and we can just go through the variances here, as it relates to variance number one, lower area, all uses, which also corresponds with several of the other use items. The intent of the zoning bylaw is to implement policies in the official plan. So what we're looking at is, is basically a project that is on, is in a mixed-use area, is located on an avenue, and has merit. So in the way of proposing variances to the bylaw, the way that the zoning bylaw is structured by the municipality initially can't take into every account what each development can offer. And so as it relates to variance number one, we're requesting a variance of 0.88 times lot coverage for all uses on the subject property, which we determine is minor. The application does conform, and we've been working with the municipality, city planning and community staff, on the urban design guide... and community staff on the urban design guidelines. Uh, this application does meet all urban design guidelines as it relates to angular planes and whatnot, um, and it, it, we believe it is minor and does have merit. Item number two, floor area residential uses, we're looking for a variance of one-point-zero-three times the lot area. The reason for this is that we're adding additional, um, rental units to the site, and therefore, we're exceeding what the current bylaw has for residential uses. Again, uh, the official plan looks at, uh, accommodating intensification. Uh, additionally, there is a, a further importance on rental units, uh, across the city, and my client is proposing a rental building. Uh, in that vein, we do meet, again, all urban design, uh, requirements, and we're still working with the city on the site plan application to finalize those details. And we believe that for that reason, um, this variance does, it will have merit. Uh, point number three regarding parking, we did submit a, uh, transportation, uh, report, um, that identified that the reduction of, uh, parking spaces is appropriate. As we all know, uh, the municipality or the city has, uh, put forth additional regulations, uh, to reduce, uh, minimum parking standards, uh, to allow for developments to proceed in a more transit-oriented, uh, way. This application is along a Dundas Street West, which does have good access to transit, um, also has good access to public parking, is very walkable, uh, for things like groceries and amenities and things like that. So, in this way, it was supported by CGE Transportation Consulting, that, uh, reduction of parking to the two parking spaces on-site is appropriate, and we concur with their, uh, the results of their study. Uh, point number, variance number four, as it relates to maximum building height, uh, as I mentioned previously, the way that the bylaw calculates building height, uh, it does include the elevator shaft. Um, all urban buildings in, in the city are trying to do these things called rooftop terraces. In order to do that, uh, it does require an elevator. The shaft does go above the, uh, overall building height, which I mentioned is sixteen-point-one-five meters. Uh, the elevator shaft extends to a height of twenty-one-point-one-eight meters, but there is no other residential spaces. That does allow for residents within the building, uh, to enjoy amenities on the rooftop. There is no other built form or whatnot, uh, associated with the elevator shaft, it's just the shaft, uh, small lobby area that's enclosed to allow people to get outside to, uh, enjoy the rooftop patio area. Uh, on that basis, the variance numerically is seven-point-one-eight meters, but it does not reflect the overall height of the building for residential uses, which is actually sixteen-point-one-five meters. Uh, in that way, but we believe it is minor and does have merit. Uh, variance number five, residential use above a commercial use. Uh, the bylaw is stipulated that all residential, uh, uses should be above a commercial use, which we agree with. Uh, in this case, it's only quarters, uh, used for a superintendent. Uh, they do come from off-site. In this way, there are times when the supers, uh, do need to be on-site, sometimes overnight is preferable, when they're doing repairs, taking deliveries and things like that, uh, that it's, uh, preferential to have some quarters that a superintendent only could use, and these would not be used for members of the public, um, as that would be contrary to the bylaw as well as other, uh, health and safety standards. In that regard, we, we agree that this item is minor and does have merit. Um, and point number six, uh, variance number six, I, I apologize, uh, going back to number five, as it relates to the commercial or mixed-use component, uh, our neighbor had, had asked whether there was other office spaces associated with the, uh, building. There is not, it's only a commercial space that's to be included at grade, um, and everything above the first floor is intended to be residential only, and those are the only two uses, uh, that are associated with the application. Finally, uh, variance number six, uh, in speaking to the main wall, uh, the bylaw speaks to a setback of five-point-five meters. The property is nine meters wide, and if we could just go to the site plan, I can show you, I can show the, where we're proposing to, thank you, yep, that's good. Um, so essentially, uh, the, the bylaw aims to have setbacks for light as well as amenity space. What our architects, CBS Architects has done is, uh, in, inserted several voids, uh, within the, within the building in order to provide things like natural light as well as amenity space. There is a centralized interior courtyard that is setback. Um, that being said, there are no windows proposed on either, uh, either wall, and, uh, that should respond to the comments from our neighbor as well. Um, additionally, uh, there are, this development does allow for, and that's why we're continuing to go through the site planning process, it allows for our neighbors to do similar things with their developments as well, by ensuring that we don't have windows or they're placed where they're shown on the drawings that are associated with the application before you. Um, so, in that regard, we do have a variance of four-point-six meters, but based on the way the building is designed and, uh, the allowance for additional development to continue to occur, we believe that it does have merit, it is desirable, uh, for the community. And I would also like to point out that our neighbors, uh, at two-nine-nine-one have also, uh, the Solnik and Solnik Professional Corporation, uh, have written letters of support, although they are one property away, uh, to the east, and, uh, I believe I've covered all of the responses.
All right, thank you. Any questions, panel? Yes, Nimrod?
Um, the neighbor indicated that she believed there was an easement, and I just, um, wanted an applicant to, uh, address that.
No problem, thank you, uh, members of the committee. There is an easement for the laneway, which is located at the south of the property. Uh, all properties along the southerly lane have an easement over their property for access.
So, the, the easement is that, uh, along the rear, it's not along the side between the two properties?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Have some comments? We have a motion? Yes, Sahir?
Uh, I'd just like to compliment the, uh, the applicant for the presentation materials, they're really quite excellent, makes it very easy to follow. Um, I don't believe, I think this is an excellent project for, for the location and, uh, repurposing of, of, of a property that, uh, has long, it seems to have lost its use, current use. Um, I'd like to, uh, propose a motion to approve, I don't believe there are any, um, conditions at all attached.
Uh, Sahir, would you consider, um, uh, an amendment to add a, a condition, um, to tie it to the plans, and if that, that addresses the setbacks and the issue of the height as well?
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
All right, do second that, uh, Nimrod? All in favor?
Yes.
You have your approval, sir, thank you. Number twenty-seven, ten Strater Avenue, purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story dwelling by constructing a new one-story front addition and a two-rear addition. I assume, uh, Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, that means a two, or two-rear story addition, or two-story rear addition, pardon me.
A two-story rear addition.
Yes. Okay, and the, uh, we have before us, uh, material submitted by the applicant and correspondence from planning. Ozren Stamback?
Yes, uh, this is Ozren Stamback, I'm at fifteen Orland Road.
Yes. Um, let me just check here. Yeah, I, I believe this is relatively straightforward. Is there anything you want to say before we take it into committee?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, and I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, that the committee or you may require.
Okay. Any questions, committee? Sahir?
Uh, just a couple of questions related to, uh, number four and number five. Are those existing con, conditions?
Okay, I'm just looking at this, so, uh, for, for number five, um, it's, the proposed west side, there it's setback is zero-point-two-zero meters, that is an existing condition?
No, no, um, I think it's number five is related to, uh, front yard landscape open space, and number four is, uh, front, uh, it's also landscaping, so it's four and five, not six.
Okay, um, Ben, uh, just give me one second to, and open that, because I have the zoning notice and, and, um, it's changed on the public notice, so I'm just gonna open that so I can address you, uh, more clearly, and I've just got the AIC, um, open in front of me, and I'm just gonna download really quickly the public notice, here it is, and then I can, I can track exactly, um, what you mean. So, number four and five, so, um, so, so these, these conditions actually, uh, that is a, through you, Mr. Chair, that is a good question, uh, because actually what we're doing is improving, uh, the, the, the front yard, uh, landscaping situation, because we are removing an existing, um, large covered porch, and we, we are instead, uh, proposing an enclosed, um, this, this thing referred to as a front addition, but is, is actually smaller than the previous porch that was there, that was covering more area and, and had mostly, uh, concrete rubble under it. So, so we are provoking these variances, but it's because, in my opinion, we are improving an existing situation.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, any comments, uh, or do we have a motion? Yes, Nimrod? Uh, you're muted, Nimrod.
Yeah, great, thank you. There are a lot of variances, but I think that they are minor in nature. Um, additional comments? I think there should be, uh, opaque privacy screening on the rear second-story balcony, and, uh, I think that the front walkway should be permeable material, and that would assist in the issue of soft landscaping. Um, so, I'll wait to see if anyone else has any other, um, comments, otherwise, I'll, I can put forward a motion.
Okay, Nimrod, doesn't look like anybody has anything to say.
Okay. So, sure, I, um, my motion then will be to, uh, approve the variances, subject to a condition, that the front walkway be a permeable material, and that the, there be opaque privacy screening, um, one-point-five-meter high, on the rear second-story balcony, east and west sides.
Okay, do we have a second, here? Aaron? Thank you. All in favor? Have your approval, thank you. Number twenty-eight, six, sixteen Lauder Avenue, purpose of this application is to alter the two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rare, a raised rear ground level deck. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, and six form letters and support from property, all from properties on Lauder Avenue, and, uh, Louis Calley?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of committee adjutments, my name is Louis Calley, and I'm, uh, representing today, uh, Mr. Hermann Mejia and Blanca Perez from, uh, six-one-six Lauder Avenue.
Right, thank you. Uh, we, uh, this is very straightforward, so, uh, I'm, I'm gonna take it into committee. Before I do, do you have anything you want to say to the panel?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Any questions, panel? Comments, a motion? Yes, Sahir?
Thank you, Chair, I think this is, uh, another very straightforward application. Um, I, I would know, no, no concerns, I don't think, uh, any conditions attached, so I'd be quite happy to move motion to approve, no conditions.
All right, second, there. Aaron, thank you. All in favor? Have your approval, thank you, sir. Number twenty-nine, seventy-eight Walker Avenue, purpose of the application to alter the existing three-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a three-story rear addition. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, email correspondence from Ravine and Nat, Natural Feature Protection, and a report from Urban Forestry, three form letters and support from other properties on Walker Avenue, and one letter in opposition from seventy-four Walker Avenue. Michelle Tiger?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, we have Michael Goldberg, speaking on behalf of the owner.
Okay.
Um, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, my name is Michael Goldberg from Goldberg Group, twenty-ninety-eight Avenue Road, Toronto M-five-M, four-A-eight.
Okay, there's some opposition, Mr. Goldberg, perhaps you could give us a presentation?
Yes, sir, could, uh, would someone please put up our presentation material? So, thank you, this is the, a portion of Walker, um, uh, you have letters of support from, uh, the west, the property to the, uh, to the west, which is eighty, and the property to the east, which is seventy-eight, and the property, um, uh, which is at, I believe, seventy-four, which is, um, in opposition, they, they followed the letter, is that house that is behind seventy-six, and you can see that roof line, and it's just to the north, the house is just to the northeast of the northeast corner of the subject site. Um, so, what I can tell you is, if you look at their, um, uh, if you look at the survey, that house is actually located on the survey, and you can see at one side, they are located two-point-five meters from the rear lot line of eighty, uh, is it eighty or seventy-six, of seventy-six, or five-point-seven, uh, five-point, four-point-five-seven meters, um, from the rear of seventy-six. Um, it is an unusual circumstance, they have a house there, they have a very narrow frontage that basically has a driveway width to get to the back of their house there. Can you turn the page, please? This is the addition, you, and, and there's two points I really want to make, um, about this, one is the total, uh, length of the addition is six-point-one, but that is only on the ground floor, and I'm gonna show you a drawing in just a moment, which demonstrates that as you go up each floor, the, um, the extent of the length of the house and the rear yard setback diminishes. But you can also see at eighty, where the rear building line is relative to the existing house and the addition, and you can see on seventy-six, and I have in front of me, and you might have it in your records, but in two thousand and seven, seventy-six Walker received a rear setback, uh, minor variance approval by the committee, uh, for three-point-seven-eight. So, seventy-six is in fact behind the house of seventy-four, we are not behind them, we're somewhat offset from them, but seventy-six is at three-point-seven-six meters, and we, at our closest point on the first floor, will be at seven, uh, point-nine meters. Can you turn the, uh, turn the page, please? Okay, this is an important drawing, because you can see the way the site is organized, so the, the rear yard setback and the length is, is, the variance itself is contributory to the first floor, um, and then you could see the setback, uh, to the second level is at nine-point-eight-nine-five, and the third level is very close to the, uh, to the minimum front, uh, rear yard setback of twelve meters, in any event, it's at basically eleven meters, at ten-point-nine-eight meters. So, you can see it stepped in that fashion, could you turn the page, please? Also of considerable importance is its relationship to its neighbors once constructed. So, you can see, there is considerable, um, um, deference and mimicking, um, of the stepping to the adjacent house to the west and to the east, to respect their rear building lines to the extent possible. And, as I said, you have... to the extent possible, and as I said, you have letters of support from each one of those neighbors to the east and to the west. Next, please. And finally, this is a, um, this is the existing condition that exists, so the top left hand is looking to the east, um, the, um, existing condition looking to the west is the top right-hand corner, and you can see, this is a mature, beautifully leafy area where there's considerable buffering from property to property. I'm just gonna extremely briefly, um, uh, Ms. Patricia Park and Alan Sternberg for the owners, they really raise, um, objections of market value, which is not a planning concern, and I think it's highly speculative at best to talk about market value, their privacy is not gonna be affected, um, the, um, there is no terraces on the second or third floor, um, the only terrace will be at grade, and I think that's very, very important. So today, there are windows looking, um, to the north, and all that's happening is some of these windows incrementally are being, um, moved a little bit north, but there will be windows looking to the north, but not at their home, at the rear lot line here, which is adjacent to their, um, open space area, and in any event, it's very, very heavily buffered. And then, um, at last, they say they do not believe that the homes in the vicinity are setback as close to the rear lot lines as would be with seventy-eight. Well, all we have to do is look next door to us, on the property that backs onto their house, and as I indicated, it is setback, um, three point seven eight meters, and it still is extending further back than this addition will be back. So, um, I, uh, strongly believe as a planner that this satisfies the four tests, and I'd be happy to answer any question, and I will add members of committee, the last point I'm gonna make is, this is a very modest addition for a young family who's expecting a child, um, uh, in April, and really, they just want to stay where they are, and to have a house that is a, that is suitable for their growing family. Thank you very much.
Any questions, panel? Okay, uh, Ms. Park, Mr. Sternberg?
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, panel members, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Alan Sternberg, uh, my wife, Pat- Patricia Park is with me, but I'll be the only one speaking, I live at seventy-four Walker Avenue. Uh, I wanna point out, first of all, uh, a misconception on the location map, uh, that was before you were part of the public hearing notice, um, it showed, I don't know if you have the location map, uh, there it is, uh, that is not seventy-six Walker Avenue, if you look at that blue area, and you look, uh, near the north end of that blue area, and to the, uh, east, the east is seventy-four Walker Avenue, and that, that shows almost sixty feet of, of our property. So I want you to take a look at that, and then please take, go to my letter of notice of objection, 'cause that's all I'm gonna look at right now. If you look at my, uh, our letter of notice, uh, of objection that we sent you on, uh, Nov- October, it's dated, yeah, if you could go to the diagram, please? That's the second page? Okay, that, that's it, that's perfect, can you make it a bit bigger, please? It's okay if you can't. Th- this is, this is, uh, first of all, I should point out, uh, if you go to the, this is what is, uh, the accurate boundary measurement, uh, the red is seventy, seventy-six Walker Avenue, and the blue is our property, and the house is, uh, right at the back there, and seventy-six is, seventy-six is in front of our house, seventy-eight is next door to seventy-six, and, uh, my friend, Mr. Goldman, mentioned eighty, which is to the west, eighty is not comparable, eighty goes all the way back, eighty's backyard goes all the way back to the end. What's unique about this location is there's three houses in an area that would normally be two. Our house, uh, it actually has some history to it, Walter Alward, uh, who built, uh, who designed Vimi Ridge and a number of sculptures at university, he built our house, and it's still in, while we renovated, it's not a turn-of-the-century house, in any event, uh, seventy-six, when they, when seventy-six got the approval in two thousand and seven, to move a little bit further back to our front line, or their ri- rear lot line, rear lot line, they did a very modest expansion with no window, there's a carport there, it has no, uh, impact on our enjoyment, they can't look into our house. Seventy-six's proposal, seventy-eight's proposal is much bigger, to say that it's the same as eighty is misleading because it doesn't have the same backyard, its whole backyard is about a hundred feet, sev- uh, eighty's about a hundred and, uh, seventy to eighty feet. Another three-story addition which is gonna creep towards, uh, the rear lot line, and then a deck on the main level, which, uh, will take even more, they're gonna be close to the rear lot line, there's gonna be windows in the back, they're not at the side, so they're looking right at us. Uh, look, I like the people, I don't wanna get personal, but it, and it isn't personal, and it isn't, as my friend wrongly suggested, that I did put in the letter, we put in, it impacted our market value, and I agree with him, that could be speculative or not, but, you know, the, they, they're creeping into us, that's a pretty substantial addition which will overlook our side yard, that's our only yard, we don't have a backyard, we don't have a front yard, what you see in the blue to the west of my, our house is our yard, they're gonna be looking right into it, uh, a- as well as the house, uh, the, uh, I don't know, seven, uh, I don't even wanna mention that, I'm just looking at, uh, yeah, the windows, the frontage, the terrace upgrade, I said, will, will impact even more, and, you know, what's that, we, we, our house, look, we all bought, we all bought at different times, we knew what, you know, what could happen, what could not happen, but it is a unique three area, our house was built for it, so what, uh, then Alward built seventy-six when his family got, uh, bigger, but it's just, to, to have another three-story addition almost to the, I'm not saying almost to the lot line, and as my friend pointed out, another fifteen feet, instead of a forty feet, so, and a substantial, if you look at the variance, number one, a substantial variance to the, uh, uh, the, 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 the lot size, uh, or the number of square feet in, in the home for the, uh, lot size itself, a- any substantial, uh, I know, when we bought our house, we bought it from a, the, uh, a, a person who wanted to tear it down and build a three-story house back there, and I guess there was so much, uh, uh, opposition, he said it wasn't worth it, we had no intention of tearing it down, it's a beautiful house, a beautiful location.
Mister, Mister Sternberg, your time is up, perhaps you could wrap up now?
The only thing I would say, that given the unique location of these three homes, uh, that the, the, that the variance is, is, that to have a three-story addition would significantly, uh, creep into our, our space, and with windows all there, it would adversely impact on our enjoyment and, uh, and pri- privacy, and those are my submissions, thank you for listening.
All right, thank you. Mister Goldberg?
Thank you very much, folks, um, I, I think what I'm gonna indicate to you is that, you know, I, I think the site plan that shows the relationship of this property to seventy-six, and the site plan that shows the relationship with eighty, I think quite shows that this is, these are narrow lots, these are twenty-five, well, the subject side is twenty-five foot wide, eighty is twenty-five foot wide, many on the street are twenty-five feet wide, this is a tightly knit urban residential neighborhood, the ability, the simple ability to look into one other, uh, rear yard from second story rear-facing windows, or third story rear-facing windows, is commonplace, and is really part of the fabric and the existing physical character of these tightly knit urban areas. Having a seven point nine meter rear yard setback is not an unusual, uh, residential, um, um, setback, um, in the city of Toronto, in fact, the general standard is seven point five meters. So, we, I recognize there's an exception in this area, but as I say, on the ground floor, it is diminishing as you move up to the, uh, second and third floor, as the cross-section had shown, so on the second floor, it's ten meters, at the third floor, it is eleven meters, um, so, and there was concern about an at-grade terrace, we're not asking for a variance for an at-grade terrace, they could put an at-grade terrace, um, on their property today, in the exact same location, where they're proposing the at-grade terrace, and I'll just tell you, just because of the, um, um, extreme and considerable landscape buffer, when people are outside enjoying the property in the leafy months of the year, these properties will not, at the grade for sure, will not have visual contact with one another from property to property, and the mere fact that there is rear-facing windows that may have the ability to overlook, just like the subject, or just like, Miss, uh, Mister Sternberg's windows overlook his neighbors, and they're, his windows are a lot closer to his adjacent neighbors than these would be. I'm just suggesting, members of committee, that I recognize that Mister Sternberg and Ms. Park are raising concerns, but in a planning sense, from a planning sense of tolerance, and the general intent and purpose of both the zoning bylaw and the official plan, to respect and reinforce the existing physical character of the area, this is a minor addition. This is, you could see by the footprints that are on the screen right now, this is a very eclectic neighborhood that does not have a uniform side setbacks or rear setbacks, um, and you could see even Mister Sternberg's property is an unusual property that probably, if you, if you go by his definition of overlook, he's got considerable overlook onto other people's properties, we will be well setback, seven point nine meters on the ground level, ten meters on the second level, and eleven meters on the third level, thank you very much.
So Mister Goldberg, what's along your client's back lot line between his property and Mister Sternberg's property?
Um, if you could turn to, uh, the photos on my presentation, on figure five, we can show you that, sir. There you go. So, um, the photo on the to- on the bottom, that's, that's the backyard, and that's what you're gonna see, basically from where the photographer is, is the, um, is the, uh, extent to which the addition is gonna go, and, um, we're probably standing on where the terr- the gap grade terrace will be.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Panel, do you have any questions? Okay, any comments, do we have a motion? Yes, Nimrod?
Um, I think what's being proposed is, uh, reasonable, and the variances are minor, I think the stepping back at the rear of the second and the third floors creates a larger setback, closer to what the zoning requires, um, so I would move approval of the variances subject to Urban Forestry number two, and also to tie the approval to the plans, uh, which would ensure that the second and third floors do step back and provide that larger setback.
Go ahead, Sahir.
Uh, just, just a comment, uh, first, Mr. Chair, it's, in this particular, um, property site, uh, especially the gentleman who was in opposition, uh, is another reflection similar to one of the earlier thing, uh, early applications we dealt with, um, where there's an unusual property situation, uh, I, I mean, this is an unusual s- situation to have a house behind a house, uh, not to dissemble it to the house that we, uh, saw in the laneway earlier today, uh, and it's very difficult to, to, uh, you know, have a situation, uh, like that easily resolved to the, uh, happiness of all. However, having said that, I, I, I think the fact that this particular proposal, uh, is attempting very hard to blend in with the, the immediate neighbor, and stepping back the upper levels makes a huge difference, so, um, like, Mr., uh, uh, my colleague, uh, Nimrod, I, I would be in favor of supporting this application, right, with the appropriate conditions.
So you're seconding Nimrod's motion?
Yes, absolutely, I would second it.
All right, all in favor? Have your approval, sir, thank you. Okay. Number thirty, one forty-nine Boone Avenue. Purpose of this application is to construct, construct a two-story laneway suite with an integral garage at the rear of the existing three-story detached dwelling. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant only. Antonella Wild?
King, hi, hello, um, Chair Member Committee, my name is Antonella Wild, address twelve Holloway Road, I'm the agent and the designer of the laneway suite, I have a short presentation, if you would like to hear it, or I'd be happy to just answer questions.
Well, we need a presentation because there's somebody who's of interest, so I, I don't know whether they're opposing it or they're not, but if you could give us a brief presentation.
Sure, okay, so, uh, as I said, we're proposing a two-story laneway suite, the ground floor will be for, um, vehicular, uh, parking and storage of bikes, and the second floor will be a one-bedroom apartment, um, we need four minor variances, the first four, the soft landscaping between the suite and the laneway, it will be paved because it acts as a driveway to, uh, get some of the laneway to the garage. The second and third variances are, we're using that there to set back to the, to rear yard, as well as to the center line of the lane, uh, we exceed the, the bylaw by just under two feet, and that was so that we could recoup that area in the back, that green space opposed to, uh, more paving, uh, or driveway. We reached out to community planning early on in the process, and I didn't receive any, uh, comments or concerns, the same thing with traffic and other departments. The last variant is a per side yard setback, and, um, to maintain as much storage as possible for the cars and the bikes, uh, we, we requested, um, a slightly smaller variant, um, setback to three feet instead of the just under five feet required, as, um, as per the City of Toronto initiative for expanding housing and laneway suites, or garden suites, uh, we feel that this is an appropriate development for the property, um, there are three, at least three suites currently in the laneway, and one under construction right now, they did speak to neighbors, uh, the homeowner who lives in the house spoke to some, and most were just curious as to what they were doing, and thinking themselves that it could be a good idea for their own property, and they didn't receive any negative feedback.
Okay, thank you, any questions, panel? Okay, uh, Denise Angeloni?
I was really just curious, um, you mentioned the variance that goes between their garage and mine, I don't think you've mentioned it, but.
Could we, could we, hello, could we have your name and your address, please?
Sure, my name is Denise Angeloni, I'm the neighbor at one fifty-one Boone Avenue.
Okay, do you have any comments?
No, I just did say, address the variance between their garage and mine, I'm not, I'm not opposing it, but I was really just curious.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, panel, do you have any questions, Sahir?
Just a quick, uh, question for the applicant, and hopefully, um, they'll accept the, uh, condition, the asphalt driveway that, um, uh, is at the entrance to. The asphalt driveway that is at the entrance to the garage, and I think that's related to one of the variances related to landscaping, would you be averse to the idea that that be produced out of permeable materials?
Um, I'm not, well, not advert, I mean, if it is a condition, it is a condition. We would prefer not, only because it's a very small section. I think it's three feet, if I'm not mistaken. And so to provide permeable for that small area, just, you know, it could heave, and, you know, we were going from a paved area into a driveway with a very short length of space. I'm just, if we didn't have to do it, I would say that would be wonderful, but I leave that up to your discretion.
Thank you.
So, could you tell us how large an area it is?
Oh, okay. So the setback, sorry, let me get that to the setback. Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. I just tried to pull up the site plan. It should have... Oh, sorry. One point two, four, sorry, four feet. It's four feet.
Four feet by how much?
Well, the full, the full width, I mean, we can make the three, three feet on the side permeable, like, you know, the pathway definitely, but in front of the garage door, it's about 14 feet. So two feet, uh, four feet by 14 feet. Sorry, do you want seven meters?
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's fine. Okay. Any further?
Five square meters.
Okay. Nimrod?
I, I guess I'm trying to understand, is the entire frontage of the lane, along the lane, is that going to, is that all for the garage door?
Mostly, yes. I mean, mo, everything, there is very little green space back there because they're all garages, and so they come from the laneway into the garage. So I don't see much, any green space back there. But, yeah, it's about five square meters of space that is paved. Or, that's all that's there.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions, comments, or do we have a motion? Yes, Nimrod?
I'm, I'll defer to Sahir, I guess.
Okay, Sahir.
Thank you. This is a fairly straightforward application, and, and something that'll produce at least some accommodation. I would, however, like to add that I, I understand the applicant suggesting it's a very small space, and perhaps the cost factor might be also higher putting in some permeable materials. But I think there's a, the variety of different permeable materials available. It doesn't necessarily have to be an expensive process. But I think we want to limit the amount of hard surface that prevents good circulation of moisture. So I would like to add a condition that the asphalt driveway at the entrance of the garage, or the driveway to the entrance of the garage be produced with permeable materials. Beyond that, I do not believe there are any conditions. I'd like to approve, approve the application with that one condition.
Okay. Do we have a second, there? Erin? Thank you. All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you. I believe I have to get him another...
Drew, you, Mr. Chair. Just looking at the time, we'll have to wait until 3:30 to deal with the next items.
I'm sorry. I'm moving too fast, right?
So I believe item 31 is, is next on the list for the 3:30 time slot.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll see you at 3:30 then?
Right.
Okay. See you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon, for Staffing Committee Room Three while we're waiting for the Chair to continue with item thirty-one. Stanley, for the next item thirty-one, we do have a registered speaker. And she will be signing on shortly, and her name is Joanna Lambert. To the Staffing Committee Room Three, we cannot hear the Chair.
I didn't turn on my microphone.
It's okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number one thirty-one is the next application, one twenty Glen Lake Avenue. Purpose of the application is to install a front yard parking pad capable of charging electric vehicles and electric bikes. With this material, we have. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. We have reports from planning and parking and administration from Transportation Services. We have correspondence and support from sixty Heinzman Street. We have interest and concern from one eighteen Glen Lake, and we have opposition from one eighteen Glen Lake as well. Okay, Tristan Ryan West.
Yes, hi, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect, so yes, sorry, my name is Tristan West. I am one of the homeowners of the property. And if the committee would like, I could deliver a quick presentation, or I'd be happy to answer any questions and any concerns.
All right, Mr. West, there seems to be somebody in opposition, so I think you better give us your presentation.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, Stanley, can we just confirm that we have Joanna Lambert online?
Hi Sabrina, I don't see her, I was just about to email you about her.
Okay, she is out of town. Maybe, we just got a very last minute email stating that she's in opposition of the front yard parking pad. So if she's not able to join, then we can proceed.
Well, do we give her, when did you get it, Sabrina?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, we just got it about ten minutes ago. She is out of town, and she is, she's the owner of one twenty-four Glen Lake Avenue. So perhaps maybe we could hold this item down, go to the next item, and then come back to this item.
Okay. Number thirty-two fifty-five Marlborough Avenue. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing two and one and a half story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear one-story addition with a rear deck. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. Gabriel Frasson.
Hi Gabriel, you've been unmuted.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee.
Can we have your name and your address, please, for the record?
My name is Gabriel Frasson of Moretto Design. I'm the agent for fifty-five Marlborough Avenue. My address is twenty-nine R Atlantic Avenue in Toronto, Ontario.
Okay, this looks relatively straightforward. I don't think we need a presentation. Do you have anything you want to say before I take it into committee?
No, I think we have about six letters of support. It's a fairly common addition that's happening in that particular street. It is part of the older city, so people are trying to maximize their living arrangements as well as possible.
Yes, okay, thank you. Panel, do you have any questions, Aaron?
I just want to make a recommendation to approve the application.
Okay, go ahead.
So based on our review, the application is very straightforward, and it is a very minor application. I would like to propose to approve the application.
All right, no conditions?
I don't see any condition.
Yeah, no conditions. All right, Sarah, you second that motion? All right, all in favor? You have your approval, thank you, sir. Okay, so Stanley, did you find this lady yet?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I still do not see her in attendance.
All right, let's go on to the next one then. Number thirty, this one will take a while because there's lots of opposition, so if she's not back by then, then we're just going to go, just have to go ahead. Okay, number thirty-three, twenty-one Heathdale Road. The purpose of this application, to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a front integral garage, a front porch, a rear third-story balcony, a rear second-story terrace, a rear ground-floor terrace, a rear ground-floor basement walkout, and an in-ground swimming pool. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. We have a report from Urban Forestry. We have a letter recommending deferral from councillor. We have three letters in support. We have opposition from Claxton Boulevard and Heathdale Road. Mr. Wengel.
Hi, Richard, you've been unmuted.
Submit to the city that we'd be happy to defer so that we could have some meetings with the neighbors. Although, planning does not have an issue with our proposal. We think there's some clarification and possibly some modifications that we can do to hopefully alleviate some concerns. So we'd be in agreement to a deferral today.
All right, Mr. Wengel, could you just, for the record, give us your full name and your address?
Yes, it's Richard Wengel, one oh-two Avenue Road, Toronto, M four B, two T eight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Elise Franklin.
I'm here.
All right, can we have your name and your address, please?
Elise Franklin, two ninety-two York Mills Road, Toronto, M two L one oh one.
Okay, and you represent landowners on Heathdale and Claxton Boulevard?
That's correct, I represent seven, seven of the properties that surround me.
So we're dealing with the issue of deferral. Mr. Wengel, it's been a request from the councillor at the behest of some of the residents for a deferral. Mr. Wengel has agreed to a deferral. What's your position on a deferral?
All my clients are in favor of it.
All right, thank you. Annie Arnell and Lawrence Cass.
Through you, Mr. Chair, Elise Franklin represents thirty-four Claxton as well. There is an opposition speaker from thirty-six Claxton who's not represented by Elise.
Where is, she's not on the list?
The second one.
Oh, no, goes over to the next page, but.
Because most of them are observing.
Yeah, okay, well, I'm not going to call on the ones observing. All right, yeah, thirty-six Vanessa Armstrong and Neil Jacobs.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, can we have your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Vanessa Jacobs Armstrong. My address is eight sixty-two Cosburn Avenue, Toronto, M four C two W three. However, I am a co-owner of thirty-six Claxton Boulevard. It's just recently been left to me in my parents' will. So I do own a thirty-six Claxton Boulevard as well.
Okay, so you were dealing with the issue of deferral now. Do you have any opposition to a deferral?
No, no, that's fine, they can defer if they would like to.
Thank you. Susan, Susan Kellner? Oh, she's represented by Ms. Franklin as well, so she's just observing. And the rest are all observing, okay, so there's no opposition to the no opposition to the deferral. Panel, do we have a motion? Imran?
Yeah, I'll move a motion for a deferral which would give an opportunity for the applicant to meet with the surrounding residents and community and explore options for changes.
All right, we have a secondary, is that here? All in favor of the deferral? Aaron, are you in favor of deferral? Yes, okay, unanimously in favor of deferral, you have your deferral. Okay, so let's, the next one's a deferral as well. We can go back, is the ladies here? Okay, all right, so thirty-one, one twenty Glen Lake? Okay. All right, so Mr. West?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, okay, I think you can make your submission now, we have the other person, the opposition on the line.
Great, thank you. So pretty much to speak to our plan, so it's on behalf of my wife and I. And our application details our plan to construct an electric vehicle, an e-bike charging pad within the frontline area of our home. My wife and I are proud owners of an electric vehicle and e-bike, feeling like we're doing our part to help Toronto be an environmentally sustainable city. As you'll see in our plans and in our drawing, our design is purposeful, adhering to landscaping and design choices that are environmentally friendly, complement design within the immediate area, and also help the city make progress on its important canopy cover and electrical vehicle targets. We'll use permeable pavers instead of asphalt to mitigate water runoff concern, water runoff concerns. We've incorporated grass and small trees into the design to create an element of green space and soft landscaping. And we built room on each side of the charging pad via retaining walls, giving us valuable space to stack snow during periods of heavy snowfall. One thing I will call out is that the city has noted that our plan contains no soft landscaping. I believe that's because we've outlined turf as a potential option, but as shown in our plan, we've incorporated ample elements of greenery. As you can see here, as you zoom in, all that green is grass. We've also taken the time to outline our own independent analysis in our cover letter, and I'd be happy to provide clarity around the questions posed by members of the neighborhood, just because there was no way to address and highlight all of our, you know, the care that we've taken with this in our application. So, you know, we cover things like some of the issues around like winter parking, and then even like within the city objection letter, they justify the limited front yard parking on Glen Lake Avenue by stating those homes have no access to rear parking when our home actually fits that same description. So to conclude, you know, my wife and I are just simply two homeowners that believe the future success of the city requires for us to be environmentally sustainable and progressive. We spent months obsessing over the details of our plan, and we hope you'll see our minor variance requests in the same light that we do, which is, you know, two homeowners funding sustainable development in Toronto that is minor and aligned and helps the city meet their strategic goals.
All right, Mr. West, do you have any children?
I do not right now, but my wife is actually expecting, and she's five months pregnant.
Okay, good. Congratulations, all right, who is?
Appreciate that, thank you.
I, Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So if we're looking at the site plan, I'm trying to understand where is the front lot line? There is a dash line showing up on this, on the plan. Is that the front lot line?
By the front lot line, yes, that would be, yes. So like past that line is ours in the city, sorry.
So in front of that line, between the street and that dash line is city property. And the Transportation Department says that there's a city, city council that they no longer will approve front yard parking pads located in the city boulevard, so what, which I'm not sure, then looking at just your portion of your front lot, front yard area, which is from the dash line to the porch, what is that going to, how is that going to provide you with the parking space?
I understand from the city that there is a moratorium on front yard parking which has been instilled. But I believe, I thought that was with the committee of adjustments here, and in this proposal that we would be making, this would be our opportunity to make our case for being able to use a portion of that city-owned property to be able to park on there. Sorry if that doesn't answer your question, yep.
So I, I thought that, you know, we can approve it, we can approve your variance for front yard parking, but I think you still have to make an application, and there's no guarantee you're going to get it. At least that's my understanding.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct. So in cases like this, even if committee were to approve the application, Transportation Services would not issue a permit for parking in the city boulevard?
Would not or may not?
Would not.
So always work then with previous cases where, where owners within the same ward have applied for front yard parking pads and have gotten permission to proceed.
Through you, Mr. Chair, given that this is a new situation with the city?
Yeah.
I don't believe that Transportation Services will be in a position to issue a permit for front yard parking on the boulevard. And that's stated in their memo that's presented on the screen right now.
Okay, so that's not your understanding, Mr. West? You believe that some of these have been issued?
Yeah, there are, there are a few, well, not a few, but there's, there's one in particular in the city where there was a vehicle owner in, or sorry, an individual in Parkdale who was able to get a front yard parking pad approved on the grounds that he was going to purchase an electric vehicle. And so like understanding that in mind, and then also was quoted as the councillor mentioning, other people have done this as well in some of the articles that I've read. I was under the understanding that I also too would be able to apply for a front yard parking pad, and understood that it would probably, my chances actually would be even better because instead of mentioning that my intent is to purchase an electrical vehicle, my wife and I already actually do own an electric vehicle within the city. Unless something has changed between that time that no longer permits for this to be an avenue for me to do this.
But you didn't check before you made this application, you didn't check with Transportation to see if you could get one if, if your variance application was approved?
I did reach out to Transportation Services prior to inquire about going the route of obtaining a permit for a front yard parking pad within the city. And what I was told, and I'm just And what I was told, and I'm just pulling up the, the correspondence here, is that there is a moratorium, moratorium, sorry, moratorium in place within the ward where we are not even able to apply for a front yard parking pad via those channels. And then in discussing it with Transportation, an option that came about was the option to go through the committee of adjustments to try and go through the front yard parking pad through this way.
Yeah, but we can, we can approve the variance, but you can then be refused the license. You understand that?
Understood.
Okay, well, I suppose you've made the application, you've paid your fee. I think it's incumbent upon us to proceed and if you don't, you know, i- if we give you the approval, you still may not get the license, but in any event. Let us, let us proceed. What is this person's name that's on? Stanley?
Us?
Hi Joanna, you've been unmuted.
Oh, hi, I'm Joanna. Hi Tristan, me and my husband Daniel here are your new na- are your neighbors. We've, we own one twenty-four Glen Lake. Hi, we lived there for twelve years.
Okay, Miss, Miss Lambert, you're talking to the, to the committee, you're not talking to Mister West.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, I understand. We also applied for a parking perm, like to build a parking pad as well on our property. And we're told that there's a moratorium as, as I've just heard and was rejected. And there are only a few spots on, on Glen Lake for street parking, so for people like us who have to do, who have to do street parking, we only have a couple of spots. So if, if our neighbors have a parking pad which we were rejected from, then that takes a spot away from us. So that's why we oppose it. Also, our neighbors at one twenty-two Glen Lake also had an electric vehicle. They also couldn't have a parking pad, so they had, they had to run a plug from the back of their house to plug into their vehicle.
Yeah, there's, there's a way to do it. Sorry we're meeting this way.
You're not talking to Tristan.
Hello, can we have one, can we have one person speaking at a time, please?
Sure, I'll, I'll speak, you've got two of us here.
What's your name? What's your name and your address, sir?
I, I'm Daniel Neymark, I'm Joanna's husband's same address, one twenty-four Glen Lake. So I understand we're only supposed to talk to the committee, so I'll say to the committee that we apologize to Tristan that we're meeting this way. We're out of town, we only got the notice today, actually. And we're happy to share with Tristan the details of how one twenty-two was able to run a plug that is set up. But there's, there's another way to charge an electric car.
All right, so we, sir, sir, we understand your position. You can have this conversation with Mister West, but you don't need to take up our time. Now you can have it some other time. So you're, you're opposing it because you didn't get one?
Well, we, we didn't get one and, and as a result, there is a handful of shared street parking spots.
And you won't, and it'll be one fewer.
This will take away one of those.
This'll take a parking spot away, is that correct?
That's right, that's all it is.
All right, thank you. All right.
I, I really want to ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
For that argument, so if you are coming to the committee next time and we give you the approval, would you be supporting this application?
So the, the challenge there is after it was rejected, like the city planted a tree that's now grown, so it would be like we'd have to remove a tree now. So it would be nice to have a parking pad, but like there's a tree that's growing in that spot, so I'm just not, I think the ship might have sailed.
Okay, I, I'm just purely trying to understand the logic, but thank you so much for.
The, the logic is entirely that there's a handful of shared spots for the, the residents of the block who have street parking. This would be one, and, and we, we couldn't get a parking pad, so it just doesn't seem fair.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, panel. So Mister West, I don't know that we need to hear from you, but do you have anything you want to say? I thi- I think we've discussed the issue and, and we understand the issue, so is there anything you want to say before we go into committee?
No, I think you have a thorough understanding of, of most of the different pieces that are mentioned there. If, if possible, or there are other questions that the committee has, I'd be happy to address any of the concerns that were brought forth in some of the letters as well, which pertains to like, you know, winter parking, reduced on-street parking spaces, water drain, water drainage, you know, daily use of an EV not being necessary and then with the city's soft landscaping claims. I'm happy to address all those pieces. Again, it's just, I only can put so much in my application. So you know, if there's any other questions around those, I'd also be happy to answer those to show that the thoughtfulness that we put into our plan here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, panel. I think we've had an application like this before where who was opposed by the residents in part because there's ban on, on front parking pads and their ban is because for drainage purposes for one reason. And so, but it, I, I don't know if Mr., if we approve the application, whether Mister West is going to get a permit. Probably not. So. Yes.
Yeah, I'll just start. I think if we're just focusing on the planning direction of our city right now is to focus more on preserving or enhancing more of those soft landscape, reducing number of parking on front path. And that's probably the mandate of our city. And, and I think we all have this situation where people are trying to get the electrical vehicle and there's no way you can charge on street parking. So these two directions are always contradicting, right? And unfortunately, at this stage, I will have to refuse the application based on the planning direction. And I hope that the city can one day come up with some, like some street parking type of device where people can charge easily. As we are phasing out compost, internal compostable engine, engine cars, there will be more of these situations happening. So yes, my recommendation is to refuse the application.
Yeah, so I mean, one, on the one hand, the city's not only trying to preserve soft landscaping, but they're also trying to phase out cars. So, and and, and maybe we sometimes get mixed up and say, well, electric cars are good, but the city's seems to be saying, we don't want cars at all. So. One way to avoid having to charge your car is to have a hybrid. So you don't, you don't have to put it in your front lawn. But. Okay, so anyways, anybody have any more comments or do we have a motion? Aaron, yeah, go ahead, Imran.
Yeah, I'm going to second Aaron's motion. I, I think that the electric vehicle issue is a red herring. The issue is they have a vehicle, but there is no driveway, there is no place to park this vehicle, whether it's electric or not. And the, the, the variance before us would not enable actual parking on that little strip on the private property because it's not large enough to have a parking space. The parking, the, the dimensions that they need is actually on the, the city, city property and the both planning and transportation have recommended refusal on transportation said there's a moratorium. So I, I would support the motion from Aaron.
So maybe we should consider recommending to the city to refuse these, refuse to bring these applications at all because Mister West has spent money bringing the application and we have to tell him there's a moratorium, you're not going to get a license even if we approve it.
Well, I, I don't understand why the applicant doesn't go first to Transportation to see if they can get a license for a parking pad in the city right, right away. And if they then can get that, then come back to the committee to get a variance for that small portion of the.
They probably told them you can't get a license because you got, need a variance. Anyways. I think it's a mess. And so we have a motion, do we have, all in favor of the motion? Your application is refused, thank you. Okay, now we go on to number thirty. Thirty-four, seventy-one Roberts Street. This application is, the purpose of the application, alter the existing two-story semi-detached town, townhouse dwelling by constructing a full third floor addition, rear and side additions to the first, second and third floors in a rear ground level deck. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant and a report from community planning. Okay, Gregor Tradnick?
Good au- good afternoon, good evening, committee and Mister Chair, my name is Gregor Tradnick. I am representing Goldman Architect and the owners of seventy-one Roberts Street. Today.
What's your, what's your address, sir?
Uh, my apologies, the address is three twenty-one Carlaw Avenue, Unit two oh three, Toronto, Ontario.
Okay, so you're asking for a deferral?
Yeah, some issues came up with planning staff and that led to discovery that there were some incorrect variances being requested. And some incorrect sort of reading of the plans on the part of the zoning department, so we need time to correct those issues.
Okay, panel, do we have a motion for a deferral? Yes, is that here?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll move to for, to allow a deferral.
All right, who's seconder? Aaron, all in favor? Have your deferral, sir, thank you. Number thirty-five, eighty-eight Queen Street East. Purpose of this application is to alter the redevelopment plan for a fifty-two story mixed-use building approved under site-specific bylaw twelve ninety-three, twenty eighteen and twelve ninety-four, twenty eighteen. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant and correspondence from Transportation Services. Right, Martin Rendell?
Can you hear me?
Not really.
Can you hear me now?
Well, it's a little better.
Okay.
That's better.
Okay, thank you.
We have your name and address, sir, for the record.
It's Martin Rendell, thirty-five Delburn Drive, Toronto.
Okay, so there's no opposition, but perhaps you could just tell us what this is about?
Sure. This is a mixed-use condominium building currently under construction. The variances arise due to final drawings that were prepared and in my opinion, the variances are quite minor. As you've noted, by the site rather, is subject to two zoning bylaws. So three of the six variances are actually for the same thing. Two of the variances are for the increasing the height of the building by half a meter from one hundred and sixty-three meters to one hundred and sixty-three and a half. There's a variance to allow an additional six-inch height to the mechanical equipment on the roof. There's a variance to alter the ratio of residential to non-residential parking. There's a hundred or seventy-eight parking spaces for residential proposed versus the two hundred and two required. The reason for the reallocation is through the marketing. There is a low demand for the amount of parking. Again, this site is well-served by transit and it's not a surprising result that there's a lower demand for parking. And then lastly, the, there's a variance on the sixth story, this is a mixed-use building and on the sixth floor, half of the floor is office uses. The other half of the floor consists of residential amenity space, a yoga studio, a fitness center, a kid's playroom. Those are on the same level, however, the zoning bylaw requires that any residential uses be above non-residential uses. In this case, as I've explained, they're on the same floor, so the variance would accommodate that mixture of uses. I could answer any questions the committee may have.
So this all resulted from finalization of drawings after construction?
Well, the building is still under construction, but inevitably on, on, on buildings of this scale, there are minor refinements that come out once. For example, they get the exact height of the mechanical equipment. And again, numerically and substantively, in my opinion, these are minor adjustments.
Yes, okay, panel, any questions? We have comments, do we have a motion?
If I may, Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I think looking at the, the variances in the context of the explanations, I think they're all quite minor. I don't see, one of the interesting things I suppose was the reduction in parking spaces, no demand for it. It's either the cost of people are beginning to realize they don't need a vehicle. So I'm, I'm quite happy to move a motion to, to approve the application with how, I don't believe there are any conditions attached to thirty-five, no, there aren't any.
Hey, just want to add that, I think item number seven talks about parking. It's not, it's not removing all of them, but it's just reducing.
It's reducing, then that's right.
Yeah.
But not significantly.
Exactly, it's reasonable, I think, to, I'm, I'm happy to second, but just to, you know, if, in case it is for the record, it, they are, I mean, there is an, an item related to the parking.
Yep.
But it's not like that eighteen-hundred unit building that has no parking. Okay, so is it here, that's your motion?
Yes.
All right, and I, Aaron, you second the motion? Okay, all in favor? Have your approval, sir, thank you. Number thirty-six, one fifty-one Campbell Avenue. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a new basement secondary suite for a total of three residential units within this dwelling. A total of two parking spaces will be provided on-site, one within the rear detached garage and one rear yard parking pad. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant only. Okay, now. Stephanie Mativa.
Stephanie, you've been unmuted.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of committee. My name is Stephanie Mativa. I'm a planning consultant with Glen Schnarr and Associates. The address is ten Kingsbury Garden Circle in Missauka, Ontario. I'm the agent for the owner.
Okay, so I don't think we need a presentation, seems relatively straightforward. Do you have anything to say before I take it into committee? Do you have anything to say before I take it into committee?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you. Panel, do you have any questions? Nimrod?
Yeah, I'm just gonna move a motion. The variances are minor. I would move approval with no conditions.
Seconder, Aaron, all in favor? Have your approval. Thank you. Item number thirty-seven.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. We will have to wait for the fourth thirty time slot to deal with item thirty-seven to forty-three. So we are ahead of, we are ahead of schedule again.
Yeah. Forty-two, Stephanie. Sabrina, it's only forty-two, isn't there?
Forty-two, yes, sorry, forty-two.
I was worried you added one.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, so thirty, item thirty-seven to forty-two will be dealt with after four-thirty today.
Okay.
Will, if I were to share my screen, would you, would we be able to see that on YouTube?
Let me see, because even YouTube isn't working for me right now either.
Okay.
But this meeting is working, but I can't sign into it on the other computer, so.
And for some, I'm watching it right now. Let me just open it up again, and it seems to be working.
Yeah, I'm just going to restart this computer.
Okay.
Yeah. It shouldn't affect the meeting, it should just, yeah. And worst-case scenario, yeah, we can just share materials on another computer that's signed in, or we can just use the host computer. It may not be pretty, but it'll work.
So are we in contact with the applicants and opponents?
Well, they can hear us now through WebEx, so they're aware of the situation.
All right. Okay, so everybody ready? All right, number thirty-seven, two oh two A, Bluer Street West. This is a consent application to sever the property into two lots, to establish separate ownership. And variances for Part forty-one, registered plan sixty-six. Uh, and, and, uh, variances for part forty-one, registered plan sixty-six R two eight nine oh three. Part forty-one has a lot frontage of eight point seven eight two meters at grade from Bluer Street West in an area of three hundred and forty-seven point seven square meters at grade. The existing commercial building will be maintained. Uh, conveyed parts forty-two and fifty-three, regis- registered plan sixty-six R two eight nine oh three. Uh, parts forty-two and fifty-three have a lot frontage of three point three eight meters at grade from Bluer Street West in an area of fifty-six, uh, point nine three square meters at grade. The existing commercial building will be maintained. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant in correspondence from community planning and engineering. Uh, Jane McFarlane.
Afternoon, members of committee. This is Jane McFarlane, a planner with Weston Consulting.
Yes.
Would you like my address for the file?
Yes, please.
It's two sixty-eight Berkeley Street, Toronto.
Okay, so I think you should just tell us. I, I, it seems to me this appears to be a technical, uh, severance, and perhaps you could just tell us, uh, what it's about?
Certainly. Uh, yes, that's, that's correct, Mr. Chair. Uh, what we're seeking to do is really a severance on paper only. The way that the, the property has been set up is there, there is a high-rise condominium residential building and various commercial units, uh, at grade up to the, the third story. And when this condominium corporation was registered, two of the commercial units, um, which are identified as parts forty-one and forty-two on the reference plan, were bought and registered under the same owner. It was two brothers with, with two companies. At this current time, what these, these two companies want to do, or two brothers, is legally separate part forty-one and forty-two, so each one can take their commercial unit, uh, and have their, a sole ownership of that. I've explained in my letter with reference to the, the registered, um, uh, reference plan how it works, because there are, um, some components. It's, it's a strata, um, reference plans, there are some components at grade, second and third floor, as well as a small mezzanine level. But really, the building will function, um, exactly as it does today. All easements registered to the, the two parts that we're proposing to sever will be maintained, and all access to the common element portions on the property for each of the respective parts will also be maintained. Um, so it's, it's enabled us to, or it's enabled the lawyer to be able to separate the legal ownership of the two commercial components. Uh, the part forty-one, if everyone's familiar with the site, is currently used as a convenience store, a Circle K, and part forty-two, um, on the, the eastern, um, commercial unit is a yoga studio, uh, at present. So, that's the way the site works. Um, I, hopefully, I've explained it in the most simplest terms in the letter that I've submitted. I've spoken to both committee staff and community planning staff at length about this, um, in addition to, uh, some dedicated meetings with engineering staff to ensure that there was no concerns from an engi- engineering and construction services standpoint. That's reflected in the two comments that are, are with this file, that staff have no concern with the proposed application. Um, so I'm happy to answer questions now, Mr. Chair of the committee, uh, if there are any.
So, Ms. McFarlane, the, the, one thing I don't understand with respect to the engineering not having any concerns is usually when we get a severance, one of the engineering conditions is to change the address of, once it's severed. So, are, are you gonna continue with the same address for both buildings?
Well, uh, Mr. Chair, conveniently, each of these commercial units have their own separate municipal address. That was the way it was set up, um, back when the planning applications came in. So, one is municipally addressed as two oh two Bluer Street, and another unit is municipally addressed as two oh two A Bluer Street. So, that's already taken care of. There are other municipal addresses on the same property as well. It spans from number one ninety-six up to two oh two Bluer. So, there's the McDonald's at the site, there's the, the exhibit residence, uh, which is the condominium. It also has a separate municipal address.
Okay, so that's all been taken care of beforehand?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Alright, panel, where are you? Uh, Sahir?
Just a quick question out of curiosity. So, the severance, you know, when I'm looking at the Google street view, um, I can see the, the two units you're talking about, the yoga en- the yoga studio entrance and the, what I believe now is, as you said, the Circle K. Is the severance only for that level, the ground level, or does it go up a certain number of, um, stories above?
Uh, through to the chair to respond to that, um, no, the severance would be, uh, at, at ground level and above. Um, right now, the Circle K is only the ground level, but there is a mezzanine level as well, um, and that is noted. If you flip through the reference plan, you'll note that there's various sheets with that which, which denote the parts on each level. And the yoga studio has space on the ground floor, the mezzanine as well, and the second and the third.
Okay. And then beyond the severance level, it's all condominiums?
That's correct, sir. There are, the condominium portion has some ground floor, because they've got some entry levels and some lobby. It's a stratified, um, plan, and what we've done here and what the committee's showing is highlighted on a plan of severance. My office prepared to show where, on which level, these parts are located, uh, to see the, the legal separation that we're proposing.
I'm glad you said you, you're in charge, not me.
I've had a lot of coaching with a lot of legal input on this. It's, uh, it was a bit complicated, to be honest.
I can imagine. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, committee, do we have any further questions, or do you have a, uh, motion? Nimrod?
Just to clarify then, so then there are no, there would be no conditions, uh, to this approval, is that correct?
That's correct, as I understand it. Do you have a motion, Nimrod?
Yeah, I, I move a motion to approve, um, the consent. Uh, consent's appropriate, and that would be the motion with no conditions.
Okay, Sahir, you second the motion?
Yes, I do.
Alright, all in favor? Have your approval, thank you. Number thirty-eight. Seventy-four Rathnelli Avenue. The purpose of this application is to obtain consent to sever the property into two undersized residential lots. Uh, conveyed, uh, part two drafts our plan, address to be assigned. Part two will have a lot frontage of seven point one four meters from Rathnelli Avenue in an area of two hundred and fifteen point eight square meters. The existing dwelling will be demolished in a new two-story, uh, two-story semi-detached, uh, dwelling will be constructed, requiring variances to the zoning bylaws outlined in minor variances. Application A oh three six seven slash twenty-two T E Y. And retain part one draft our plan, address to be assigned. Part one will have a lot frontage of seven point four nine meters from Rathnelli Avenue in an area of two hundred and eighteen point four s- square meters. The existing dwelling will be demolished in a new two-story semi-detached dwelling will be constructed, requiring variances to the zoning bylaws outlined in minor variance application. A oh two six six slash twenty-two T E Y. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Benzkowski?
Morning.
Hi, Jonathan.
Oh, good afternoon, panel, Mr. Chair.
Yes, can we have y- your name and your address for the record?
Yes, Jonathan Benzkowski, three zero one Kiwatin Avenue.
Okay, understand you're asking for a deferral?
Correct, sir. The, uh, two of the, both minor variance applications, uh, variance was missed on both of the zoning reviews, uh, which was not reflected in the public notice that went out. Parking variances were both, for both, uh, part one and part two were not identified. Uh, therefore, um, we are not able to move forward today, sir.
Okay, alright, so you're asking for a variance, thank you. Uh, Nadia Siboleva and Sean Garrity?
Hi, Nadia, you've been unmuted.
Yes, hello?
Yes, can we have your name and your address for the record?
Nadia Siboleva, seventy-one Poplar Plains Crescent. My understanding was that this application was to be deferred.
Yes.
Is, is that, is, uh, so I've, I'm, so, I would like to object, but if the application has been deferred, I imagine I should take my objections for the next hearing?
Hello, it has not been deferred yet. I'm asking, uh, what your, uh, uh, opinion is with respect to the deferral, but we've been told that some variances have been missed, so a new notice has to be sent out, so we can't deal with it. So, uh, I mean, you may, so what's your position on a deferral?
I'm in favor of deferral.
Okay, thank you very much. Ian Brown?
Ian, are you there? Through you, Mr. Chair. I was unable to locate Ian. Um, I've tried unmuting some call-in users, but they appear not to be Ian.
Okay.
Problem is, I'm sorry, this is still not you. Number, there are thirty-seven objections on this file.
Yes? Did she get cut off?
So, I'm sorry, there are thirty-seven objections, and some people I know who plan to call in may not have called in, assuming the deferral would be granted. That was the communication we received from the city, so I imagine several people who signed in just didn't call in, thinking it would be granted a deferral.
Okay, thank you. That means, must mean they don't object, but, so we can't get Ian Brown? Alright, thank you very much. Alright, Sean Clark and Carolyn Kil- Kilgore?
Yes, I'm on the line, uh, and yes, I do object, but I don't object to the deferral of this.
Alright, can we have your name and your address for the record, sir?
Uh, Sean, S E A N, Clark, C L A R K E.
Alright, so you do not, yeah, you do not object to the deferral.
I do not object to the deferral, and it's, uh, seventy Rathnelli Avenue. I'm not sure you got that.
Alright, thank you, sir. And, uh, Donna Crossen?
Donna, you've been unmuted.
Okay, thank you. I support the deferral.
Alright, can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Donna Crossen, seventy-two Rathnelli Avenue.
Alright, thank you very much. Scott Sandler?
Scott, you've been unmuted.
Thank you, sorry. Hi, uh, Scott Sandler, two one six Cottingham Street.
Yeah, and, and are you in favor of the deferral?
I, I am in favor of the deferral, thank you.
Thank you very much. Panel, do we have a motion for a deferral? Yes, uh, Sahir?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'd, I'd like to move motion for deferral.
Okay, secander, Aaron, all in favor? Have your deferral, thank you. Number thirty-nine. Eight Woodycrest Avenue. Purpose of this application, to obtain consent to sever an existing residential lot into two undersized residential lots, and to create a new easement right-of-way, conveyed parts two and three draft our plan, address to be assigned. Parts two and three has, have a lot frontage of five point nine eight meters from Woodycrest Avenue and a lot area of two hundred and fifty-nine point two square meters. A new three-story detached dwelling will be constructed, requiring variances to the zoning bylaws outlined in minor, minor variance application, A oh six eight four slash twenty-two T E Y. Easement right-of-way, part three draft our plan. Part three has an area of seventy-three point eight square meters and will be s- subject to an easement right-of-way for the purpose of pedestrian access in favor of the lands municipally known as ten Woodycrest Avenue. Retain part one draft our plan, address to be assigned. Part one has a lot frontage of five point eight eight meters from Woodycrest Avenue and a lot area of two hundred and fifty-seven point four square meters. A new three-story detached dwelling will be constructed, requiring variances to the zoning bylaw as outlined in minor variance application, A oh six eight five slash twenty-two T E Y. Ms. Stewart, oh, pardon me. We gotta, we have material submitted by the applicant. And we have, uh, email correspondence from community planning, a report from engineering, and a report from urban forestry. We have opposition from three properties on Woodycrest Avenue. Ms. Stewart?
Hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, maybe.
Okay, great. Um, this is Amber Stewart, and I am the lawyer for the owner, uh, applicant, and my address is seventy Plunkett Road, Unit Six, in Toronto, for the record.
Okay, and you're asking for a deferral?
That's correct, sir. Um, similar to the last application, in my review of the file, sir, I have noticed, um, a couple of issues in respect of the public notices that were issued. Um, so the first issue is with respect to the consent notice. There is a description that a pedestrian easement will be conveyed over part three, um, in favor of ten Woodycrest, and I'm honestly not sure where that came from, because, um, it's, it's not part of the application. But I think more importantly, sir, in respect of the minor variance notices for both parts, you can see that there is, um, variance number one, which relates to soft landscaping. Uh, there, there, I think it's just a transcription error in the variance, because the zoning notices were, well, they were sort of correct. So, the zoning notices identify the correct section, but they relate to rear yard soft landscaping between the laneway suite and the lane, and the description of the variance relates to rear yard landscaping between the main house and the laneway suite. So, so the description has been transcribed incorrectly. It, there's no landscaping variance required for the area between the house and the laneway suite. But then, in addition to that, Mr. Chair, um, we believe that the zoning notices contained a couple of errors, so, um, even though we think it is necessary to have a variance for soft landscaping between the laneway suite and the lane, we don't think it's zero. We think that can be improved based on the plans. Uh, and then the other issue is with respect to the side yard setback variances. We don't believe those variances are necessary based on the zoning bylaw and our review of the plan, so we'd like the chance to confirm both of those with the examiner. so we'd like the chance to confirm both of those with the examiner. And then, of course, lastly, we have reviewed the objection letters and we would like a chance to have a conversation with those neighbors and, uh, potentially improve certain variances in addition to what I'm discussing. So that is the reason for requesting the deferral.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, Sam Sakhavars and Leah Millman?
Is that ten Woodycrest Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah, I, no, yep, go ahead.
Can we have your, I don't know, I don't know whether we got your full name. You may have said it, but I don't think we heard it.
Oh, my apologies, uh, Sam Sakhavars, S A K H A V A R Z, and I'm at, uh, number ten Woodycrest Avenue.
Alright, I think you did it right, it just didn't come through. Okay, sir, are you, uh, uh, in favor of a deferral?
Uh, yes, we're okay with the deferral.
Alright, thank you. Erica Devasconcellos?
Hi, my name is Erica Devasconcellos, I'm the owner of six Woodycrest.
Alright, are you in favor of a deferral?
No, not especially, I think these are minor, uh, things that can, we can still discuss the main tenants of this proposal.
But the notice was wrong and there has to be a proper notice, so we can't, so the app, we can't go ahead, the committee can't go ahead with the application until we get a proper notice 'cause there may be other people who, uh, are affected by this, so-
I see.
So, are, 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 are you opposed to the deferral in, in that case?
No, I, I will agree to the deferral, can I ask, um, how long will it take for the application to be heard when there's a deferral? What's the, the lag in the timeframe usually?
I think it's about three months, depending on the, uh, uh, our list.
Uh-huh.
Through you, Mr. Chair, it's the next available hearing when the applicant is ready to, um, submit the revisions.
Okay, so, okay, so-
So we're looking at another three months?
Perhaps, perhaps longer, because depends how long it takes the applicant to get things straightened out.
I see, okay.
Thank you, Darren J. Harris?
Darren, you've been unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Darren J. Harris, four Woodycrest Avenue, I'm in favor of the deferral.
Thank you. Uh, Gerald Florent?
Gerald, you've been unmuted.
The deferral.
Alright, Gerald Florent?
Yes.
Yes, can we have your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Gerald Florent, eighteen Woodycrest.
Okay, are you in favor of the deferral?
Uh, from what I heard so far, it doesn't look like I have a choice.
Thank you. Uh, panel, do we have a motion for a deferral? Yes, Zahir?
Thank you Chair, I'll mo- I'll, uh, move to, uh, approve the, uh, request for deferral.
Okay, we have a seconder? Yes, Nimrod, all in favor? Alright, you have your deferral, thank you. Number forty? One eighty-one Cedric Avenue. Purpose of this application to legalize and maintain the construction of a front second-story addition, a front third-story balcony, a third-story addition, a three s- three-story rear addition, a front porch, a rear deck, and a rear basement walkout. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant and we have opposition from, uh, properties on Moore and Cedric Avenues. Uh, Bruno Lopez?
Bruno, you've been unmuted.
I represent the owner for this hearing.
Mr. Lopez, uh, we, we didn't hear what you said, but we need your address, your name and your address for the record.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members, my name is Bruno Lopez from M X L Engineering and, uh, our address is sixteen forty-nine Sinclair Avenue West.
Okay, so there is someone in opposition, I think you better give us a brief presentation.
Absolutely, so, Mr. Chair and committee members, this is an application that has been ongoing for quite a while. Uh, so we already had a previous, uh, show at committee, uh, but, uh, there were some problems with the zoning notices, so we have to go back to the drawing board. Um, we had the community planning review in the past as well and, uh, I'm actually aware of the new community planning, uh, report, which, uh, um, it's requesting denial, which I'm very, very surprised, and the reason for is because after the first turnar- turnaround, I have this discussion with the planner and we actually, um, took back this application, um, pretty much to what the house was in twenty-fourteen. So, I don't know if, if staff is able to, to actually do a, a Google street view, so we can get, uh, some dates. Uh, there is some histori- some historical data here. So, um, this, this, uh, homeowner, my client, purchased this home in twenty-sixteen. So in twenty-sixteen, there were already a couple violations and, uh, I don't think he was aware. But anyway, so, w- what was happening is this, uh, this front porch, it's already existing from twenty-eleven, so it's way back then. So, what we're trying to do basically is trying to legalize this porch. And on our first, uh, committee hearing a few months ago, um, we were trying to maintain what is existing today, which actually is sort of an enclosure past the front addition that exists from before twenty-eleven. So we decide with planning to retract and not adding a second floor on the front and, uh, not enclose these, uh, existing today's enclosure on the front porch. So we pretty much comply with what planning was requesting us. Um, in regards to the addition, it's, uh, it's pretty much, uh, very similar to what you see two houses up. It's a, a third-floor addition, it's a little bit of an increase on the, on the, on, on our F S I. So if we go item by item, uh, the first variance, it's about, uh, having pretty much almost zero landscaping. We have only nine percent. But if we go on lot one fifty-five, one fifty-three, one fifty-one, one forty-nine, one forty-three, one forty-three A, one forty-one, we got the exact same condition, so in the front, some of them, they might have some flower pots and that's about it, so. It's a, it's a street that I understand that planning is trying to reverse it, but the nature of the street-
Sir, sir, Mr. Lopez, I think I have to clarif- I have to clarify some things 'cause I, I have no idea what you're talking about, those aren't, uh, that's not a variance that I have. First of all, I want to go back to the purpose, 'cause I, 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 uh, not sure that, uh, uh, we have it right. So, the purpose is to legalize and to maintain the construction of a front second-story addition. Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
And, and-
No, sorry, Mr. Chair, no, it's, uh, it, there is no second-story addition in the front.
Yeah, so, i- i- from what I understand, from what you said, is to legalize and to maintain the construction of a enclosed front porch?
It was on the very first time, but not now, we, we gonna keep the exa- i- it's pretty much to legalize the existing condition and the existing condition is what you can see from, uh, Google Street Maps, which is a, a one-story, well, it's like the front porch that, that it's, uh, partially enclosed.
Okay, so let, let, Mr. Lopez, let's do this a little bit at a time till we get it right because, uh, this doesn't seem to be, um, in line with what, what you're telling me. So just, just tell us what's wrong as I go through this, there's a whole bunch of things here. To legalize and to maintain the construction of a front second-story addition. You just said there's no second-story addition?
No, it's not.
Okay, then it says, and, and as I understand this, the wording here, it's to legalize and maintain a front third-story balcony?
Uh, there is a balcony, but it's compliant, it's, it's not part, actually, there is no balcony now. We are proposing a balcony, but that balcony is not part of any variance.
Okay, well, but it doesn't matter, it's part of the purpose, but it's not to legalize and to maintain it, it's to-
Correct.
Is to construct or al- alter the building by constructing a front third-story balcony?
Yes, correct.
Alright, then it says a third-story addition.
Correct.
Alright, a three-story rear addition.
Correct.
A front porch.
Yes, correct.
So you're gonna have a new front porch?
Uh, well, it's existing, but we, we trying to make it conformant, as, as conformant as, as possible.
A rear deck?
Correct.
And a rear basement walkout?
Correct.
Okay, so to legalize and maintain the construction of is only a, a front porch addition?
Correct, absolutely.
Okay, and the rest is to alter and construct, starting with, with the front second-story addition? Is that right?
Absolutely, that's it, the balcony only, balcony on the third floor. Because on the front, there is no additions at all, we're just trying to legalize existing condition non-compliant for the front porch.
Okay, so, uh, so the front second-story addition comes out and it's alter and construct a front third-story balcony, a third-story addition, a three-story rear addition, a rear deck, and a rear basement walkout?
Correct.
Okay, alright, so the first variance that I have is the maximum permitted building length is seventeen meters and you're asking for a, a, a length of nineteen meters?
Correct, and so the comedian-
It's number one?
Yes, it's number one.
Okay, number two, the maximum per- permitted floor space index is zero point eight times the re- area of the lot, one hundred and eighty-six point six square meters. And then the altered dwelling has a floor space index equal to one point two seven times the area of the lot, two hundred and ninety-five point fifteen square meters, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
And the third variance is the minimum required front yard setback is five point oh four meters. The altered dwelling is located point, zero point two six meters from the front west lot line.
That's correct.
Alright, is that, are those all the variances?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, so did you, I, I'm going to go to, uh, someone who's opposing this. Did you want to say something, uh, about why you need these variances before I go to the opposition?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, it's, uh, these are, to me, seems to be a very pretty, uh, pretty straightforward project, uh, even though that some, some of these, uh, existing conditions are already existing, so we try to make a couple compliant and the third-floor addition and rear addition is pretty much upkeeping with the neighborhood. Uh, two, two numbers up, which is number one eighty-five is not mistaken, it's, it's a development, it, that, pretty much, it's the same scenario in some of these, uh, variances and some, some other e- existing adjacent homes, they have these other variances, the, which is the, the, the front yard setback.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dan Greenstein?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I was unable to locate Dan Greenstein? Um, I'm gonna try to unmute the two call-in users.
There, there are other people on the line?
Hi, Dan, are you there?
Yes, Dan Greenstein, twenty-three Moore Avenue.
Okay, can, can you tell us what your, uh, can, can we have your comments, uh, on this application, sir?
Yes, um, did, did I hear correctly that, uh, that it, uh, community planning has recommended refusal again?
Um, I, I don't think we said that.
Okay, I thought I, I thought that's what the, uh, the agent had said. Um, so, a- at any rate, thank you to the, uh, the committee for soliciting, uh, neighbors' feedback. This process is vital because it is neighbors, not the committee or developers who have to look at and live with next to the permanent built forms that result from these hearings. Uh, in the last meeting for this application, uh, community planning report recommended a refusal based on concerns about, uh, front yard setback and landscaping. Uh, since then, the applicant has increased the proposed front setback by a mere two inches. Uh, as a result, community planning's concern persists today, uh, given that there's a proposed expansion of living space below the front porch that was built by the applicant without permits and comes within ten inches of the front property line. Uh, by asking for this egregious front setback, the application also circumvents the seventy-five percent front landscaping requirements, which should be a fourth variance request today, as it was in the last committee meeting. In speaking with the planner who authored, uh, their refusal re- recommendation, in her six years with, uh, Toronto Planning, she could not recall a recommended or approved variance with less than one foot of setback from the front property line. I trust also that someone can demonstrate the need to add a three-story addition onto an existing nine-bedroom dwelling that is surrounded on all sides by one and two-story brick homes. Uh, my submission of objection shows a for-sale listing of the current property indicating that, that it currently has nine bedrooms. The applicant's agent noted in the last meeting that the applicant is a family of just five people. Uh, the applicant has al- also had four years to legalize the construction undertaking, undertaken without permits that do not comply with bylaws or building codes. These include three violations for structural work with no permits and a twenty-nineteen underpinning that has not proceeded to the footings, uh, and foundations inspection following years of excavation. I believe the role of the committee is to approve applications that respect the intent and purpose of bylaws, not to re- retroactively change laws that have been flagrantly, flagrantly ignored and broken. I'm hoping the agent could also clarify whether it is typical practice for professional engineering firms to submit plans for structural additions and three-story, uh, additions on top of existing foundations that have failed years of municipal inspections for underpinning. Only after these non-compliant additions and foundations and, uh, oversized shed are inspected and passed, should the committee even consider a new application to nearly double the floor space allowance. I question how many of the proposed rec rooms, playrooms, studies, dens, and living rooms would possibly be used as bedrooms if these variances are approved. As referenced in the staff report that recommended a ref- a refusal, the official plan calls for development to provide quote-unquote landscaped open spaces and coordinated improvements in setbacks to enhance the local character. It does not say to have zero trees and public safety hazards of front parking that encroaches on the sidewalk from insufficient front setback. I would add that since the application was made two years ago, the applicant has not approached neighbors to address these concerns prior to either the original or the revised variance application. This is evidenced by zero letters of support on the file and at least eight letters in opposition, including many who fear submitting opposition given the applicant's history of threats and intimidation of neighbors. When landscaping in the submitted plans requires fifty percent and you propose nine percent, that does not maintain the intent and purpose of the bylaw. When front setback requires sixteen and a half feet and you propose ten inches, that does not maintain the intent and purpose of the bylaw. Granting these major variances would set the precedent that bylaws should just be ignored and therefore render the committee of adjustments defunct. I for one, respect the role of the committee and hope that it continues to uphold the intent and purpose of the bylaw.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Lopez?
Yes, through you, Mr.
Yes, through Mr. Chair, I can definitely um.
Yeah, can I a- can I ask you a question before you proceed? We don't have, uh, in in the file, we don't have any letters from the uh planning c- c- community planning. We don't have any uh 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 decisions, previous decisions. This this was before the committee?
Yes, through Mr. Chair, yes, the I I was confused that the p- the planning might be might be some some uh, there would be some letter that was pr- probably from the the previous hearing.
Yeah, but we don't seem t- I I don't see it in the file.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have it in our records, but it is not included in the deferred package. Um, but it is a staff report from community planning recommending that the application be refused um at the January twelfth, twenty-twenty-two hearing.
All right, and and i- is there a previous decision in there from the committee?
Um, I do not see a previous decision.
No, through you, Mr. Chair, that was when we deferred, so I believe what I'm getting, and and I was somehow uh again surprised to see some of this information, probably that's what I was looking under the application details. There is a lot of data here that actually is from the previous hearing, that's why I got myself confused. And as I stated, I was quite surprised that planning was still in disagreement, because we agreed to to do the changes to actually have the support from planning.
So. But the the, so we don't even have a copy of the uh previous application to see what changes were made?
Um, basically, it was, i- if you go on my on my drawings, and you'll see sort of uh on a side view, uh per se drawing uh A A three zero three. If staff can pull up A three zero three. There you go. So what you see, the 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 front addition, let's call it, the porch, um, partially, it's enclosed, which is being like that since twenty-eleven, and part of the very front, it's now proposed to be open. And currently, it has plywood and windows, and that's something that the homeowner has to remove. And that's where all this disagreement is coming with the setbacks, with more area and F S size and so. So we removed that and uh planning was uh was on board, was in support of the change. So now, basically, we are bringing to the same condition that this house, in terms of the front look, was in twenty-eleven, twenty-fourteen.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, panel, I I'm a little confused here as to uh uh, this doesn't even sound like, this application doesn't even sound like the previous applications. And I I don't know what the previous application was, what changes were made. I don't know what objections the uh uh planning had. Um, I, we're not, the purpose is not correct. Uh, I I tried to straighten it out, so.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I, there is uh the deferred package.
Yeah, but doesn't have, doesn't have.
And if the present, if the presenter wants to show the minutes from the deferred package, that'll show you what was uh under agenda. And then that'll show you what variances were before committee. So it appears that there were four variances before committee in, and that would have been in January. So it appears that they removed, um, they were able to deal with the landscaping variance, and they're able to reduce uh the total floor space index. And they improved slightly the third variance for front yard setback.
Yeah, okay.
That's correct.
All right, and what did, what did, uh, on what grounds did planning say refuse it?
So I'm I'm reviewing the community planning report, and their issue was mainly with variance number one for the zero uh percent front yard landscaping.
And that's been eliminated?
And and that's been eliminated, as well as the front yard setback, and that has been improved.
With the front yard set, front yard setback is still only zero point two six meters.
Yes. Where they were previously proposing zero point two two meters. And that's probably why we haven't received a further comment from community planning, uh, because variance number one got deleted.
Right, okay.
And they're able to maintain the seventy-five percent of front yard landscaping.
Okay, so I I was under the impression that that from the objector that there was a whole long list of variances, but there wasn't. And and.
Nope.
And one has been, and one has been deleted, and the other one is still problematical, because it's improved, but not much. Okay, so, uh, thank you, Sabrina.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, panel, uh, do we have any comments? We have a motion. Do you have any further questions of the applicant?
Uh, of Chair F M A, um, the, just having looked at the deferred uh agenda, or the uh the one item that were, um, I suppose was contentious previously was the landscaping issue. So my question to the applicant is, how did you change that from a requi- a requirement of seventy-five percent to zero? What have you done? Because you you asked us to go and look at Google Map, and the most recent one is basically indicating that the entire front, with the, except for a tiny strip on the side, is essentially all hardscape.
Uh, absolutely, through, Mr. Chair, Mr. Bayet, uh, what happened is because now we are considering our front wall, this this addition, so that's your zero set point. So literally, we i- in theory, it's like you have a, we have now a hundred percent landscape of what is available.
And how much is that?
Uh, this is the the nine square uh nine square meters, or actually, sorry, uh, it's the not, sorry, the nine percent. It's the nine percent. So because of this condition of of the new front wall being so close to property line, um, we do whatever we can, like like the neighbors do, it's just having like a flower pot at the front, and that's what is possible to be done.
That doesn't sound like a soft landscaping to me, a flower pot, but thank you.
It is considered soft landscaping, uh.
Okay.
So here, and and if there's no room, there's no room. Any other questions or comments?
Are we in committee now?
Yes.
All right, so my comments are that essentially, the front yard setback, there is none. It's like ten inches, and so then there almost is no room for any type of landscaping. Um, I I don't believe that the s- setback that's being proposed, what's required is five meters and what's being proposed is point two six meters results in appropriate development. It basically shifts the front of the house in in front of the adjacent houses, and I don't believe that's appropriate.
So, uh, uh. Mr. Lopez, what was the existing front yard setback?
So through, Mr. Chair, since twenty-eleven, since twenty-eleven, and we can go back dated with uh Google Maps, um, this is the existing front wall, this is the existing, so the stairs, the access to the house and the access to the basement is the same one since twenty-eleven. So this is a condition that it's existing already over a decade. And and the front, like many other houses, just the, just for information, is pretty much all the like I I brought a list, one fifty-five, one fifty-three, one fifty-one, one forty-nine, one forty-three, one forty-one. They have the exact same conditions, which is the the, there is pretty much no landscaping. And a couple of them, they are literally on zero lot line, so this is not a development. It's pretty much along the lines with a few different addresses on the same side of the street, just just a few houses down. It's an existing condition.
Okay, Aaron, did you have any comment?
Well, I think, at the beginning, I thought that it was a a game of numbers by, you know, changing the definition of front yard and, you know, eliminating that soft landscape requirement. And but when you look at the whole street of this uh neighborhood, I think my, the 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 question that Nimrod brought up is, is it appropriate? If we, let's say the landscape is pretty soft, that's just to be a little bit more sympathetic. Just look at item number three now, uh, is that reasonable with only point two six meter of uh front yard setback? And I think the applicant is saying that this is an existing condition. And it's a very unique situation in the neighborhood. Am I right, the neighbor? I mean, the the applicant, that's basically what he's trying to explain. And if we don't approve it, he has to demolish what was.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Aaron, that's exactly what.
Mr. Lopez, we're in committee now, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, unless we ask you a question, we don't expect you to uh interfere with the discussion.
I'll ask, just to be nice, I'll ask him the the last question. So if we are not approving item number three, does that mean you have to demolish the illegally built structure at the front?
Yes, through, Mr. Chair, apologies, because I was unmuted and I thought I was asked a question. And to answer the question, yes, Mr. Aaron, we'll we'll have to demolish something that already exists over ten years.
Understood.
But but that condition is consistent with the neighbors as well?
Absolutely, absolutely, that i- if you go on Google Maps, again, I I haven't, I haven't done, because I don't have a survey, I cannot survey the street, but from Google Maps, if you do an aerial view, you will see multiple houses that their front yard setback is pretty much zero. They they are very li- two two numbers down, you'll see a bungalow, two numbers down.
What would you be demolishing? A covered front porch?
Correct.
All right, and and how would you get in the house if you demolished that front porch?
Uh, so, we can't, because the stairs won't be compliant.
Okay, and how much front yard setback would you have if you demolished the front porch?
Maybe another one point two meters or so.
Okay. All right, yes, Nimrod?
Yeah, so when you look at Google Street View, and, you know, the applicant has suggested we should look at Google Maps, so Google Street View, you can see that the houses on either side of this house are set back behind this enclosed first story. And this first enclosed first story sticks out in front of the adjacent houses on either side. So I I.
Yeah.
If you have problems with this, and I would move a motion of uh refusal.
What were you gonna say, Aaron?
The one that is having similar situation is one seventy-five, which is two houses down. And then, I think that that's the impression, because after that, now that the the question is this, we can't confirm if the property line is kind of a straight line running sidetrack avenue, right? Assuming yes, then one seventy-five do have an existing condition, and in fact, that house was completely built out. Uh, but one seventy-five is a bungalow.
Uh, uh, Aaron, is that one seventy-five?
Yeah, so that one seventy-five, uh, if I'm just looking at it, it is the the front of the wall is kind of, uh, sorry, the the roof line, the front of the roof, is aligned with the uh the applicant's uh property of the front porch.
It's, but it's not an enclosed porch, correct?
It's not, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so Aaron, how wide is this porch? I mean, if if we refuse it, then he has to take down the front porch, how much is he gonna gain? And how much is is this property ahead of the neighboring properties?
No, I think, the the question is this, I think he, the base on our our internal discussion is that if the applicant is going to remove the hoardings or the walls around the porch, at least Nimrod will probably think that it is a more reasonable development, because it is more like an existing condition that aligns with the neighborhood characteristic. Uh, I'm not trying to boot us in Nimrod's mouth, but that's how I'm looking at it. It it seems more reasonable that way than asking them to take out the whole front porch roof and reset the entrance, rebuild the staircase, in order to meet that, in in order to eliminate that whole um variance that has to be done. But the question is, a lot of time, we try to be nicer and tie to the plans, but in this case, we tie to the plans, it means we're encouraging the neighborhood to enclose all of their front porch.
So, we, uh, I mean, even if we require them to tear down the front porch, we're not gonna gain a whole lot of front yard setback.
Not gaining setback, yes, correct, we cannot gain setbacks. We're here, the the whole idea is to control how how the front porch should be. Should it be an open space like the rest of the neighborhood or enclosed, like what this applicant is trying to do?
But but the enclosure doesn't really take up uh setback space, does it?
It doesn't, it doesn't, he still have to come back after taking out the. So I guess we can approve with a condition that this front porch cannot be enclosed.
I I I think I I understand what you're saying, Aaron, and I think that's the point. Because if that in, if that porch is enclosed, it provides a precedent for others to do the same. And then you have the same prob- potential problem. So it would be an approval, because as uh as uh Don has mentioned, um, uh, it it removal of the enclosure won't change the setback, but it certainly, uh, removal of the enclosure will uh remove any precedent setting by this precedent set by this particular property.
Right, all right, so we still have um Nimrod's motion. Uh, is there a second or for Nimrod's rosh- motion to refuse the application in its entirety? Is that your motion, Nimrod? Yes, okay.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay, I don't see any appetite for a uh, for anybody to second it. So, uh, do we have another motion? Aaron?
Yeah, so I'll guess I'll make a try, another option or a motion is to approve the application with a condition that the front porch cannot be enclosed or heated.
Okay.
And heated, sorry, yeah.
Do we have a second or for that motion? Okay, so here seconded that motion, all in favor of Aaron's motion. Okay, three in favor, uh, Nimrod, you're opposed.
Uh, uh, sorry, Chair, should that be an amended one as well as the purpose was amended?
Yes, purpose was amended. That's part of your motion, Aaron? You don't object to that being part of your motion, having the purpose amended?
No, I don't object, yes.
Okay, so the that uh, motion passes three to one. Okay, so the, that, uh, motion passes three to one. Number forty-one. Four oh five Palmerston Boulevard. And the purpose of this application is to convert the existing three-story multi-unit detached dwelling. Into a three-story, one-unit detached dwelling. By constructing third-story dormers, a rear one-story addition and a rear deck. With this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant. An email correspondence from planning and a report from, uh, and a report from community planning. Uh, Gloria Apostolou. Mister Apostolou, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Well, we hear you now that you've spoken up, yes, please give us your name and your address for the record.
My name is Gloria Apostolou and I'm the architect and agent for four oh five Palmerston Avenue.
Okay, could you just tell us, there's no opposition, but just tell us what this is about? It seems to me that you're reconstructing the third-story dormers?
We are, we are proposing third-story dormers. We are also proposing to demolish a three-story addition that exists at the back of the house. So our FSI is decreasing from zero point seven seven to zero point seven.
Okay.
That is one of our best variances. I'm happy to walk you through, um, the four variances. They are all a reflection of existing non-conforming conditions of this house on this property. So the existing house already has a, a height that is more than ten meters. We're proposing to increase the height slightly to get better headroom on the third floor. And we've submitted an illustration of how this height relates to the two adjacent houses. We are nestled in between the two in height. We also have a variance for, I spoke about the FSI. But that's an improvement of the existing FSI. Uh, and the fourth variance is for rear landscaping. Again, the existing landscaping is less than the fifty percent required. Um, and we have provided forty-one point six percent of landscaping, which was in conversation with the planner. They were satisfied with that amount.
Is that an improvement?
It's, um, but it's a change in statistic. Because we have a new rear wall. That, um. Uh, just the area around it is calculated differently at the rear yard. Uh, the existing garage occupies most of the rear yard, we're not changing that. Um, we have a much smaller mass at the rear yard. So we have a lot more sunlight, daylight views opening up at the rear.
Okay, thank you, panel, do you have any questions? Yes, Sahir?
Um, just, I'm just looking at the site plan and, uh, you've got a stone patio surrounding a hot tub. As well as, I'm assuming these are the, um, pavers that would lead to the garage from the house. Um, would those be, uh, produced out of, uh, or if you could use permeable materials for those? I think it would certainly add to the permeability of the rear yard, would that be a consideration on your part?
Absolutely, we would be happy to do that. The hot tub is at grade level, it's considered soft landscaping. So it's the pavers around it and the walkway from the garage to the back of the house, that is the only card scapeing.
Thank you, I think that would be great.
Any, any other questions or comments? Okay, Sahir, did you wanna make a motion?
Certainly, I could do that, um, so I'd like to propose a motion to, uh, accept. Uh, to approve the application, um, I don't believe there are any, uh, conditions. Um, except the one condition that we've now had, and that is the stone patio surrounding the hot tub. And the pavers leading to the garage from the house be pre- used of permeable materials.
Do we have a second, Eric? Aaron, all in favor? Have your approval, thank you. Number forty-two. Three, three ten Ronson's Vale Avenue. And the purpose of this application. Is to construct a two-story ancillary building containing one integrated garage space. One integrated parking space and a laneway suite at the rear of the existing three-story detached apartment building. Abutting the laneway. Uh, with this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant. Email correspondence from transportation engineering, opposition from three ten Ronson's Vale. A tenant, uh, three ten and correspondence and opposition from three tenants of three ten. Uh, Mister Palumbo?
Andrew, you've been unmuted.
Uh, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Alright, uh, good evening Mister Chairman, uh, members of the committee and committee of adjustment staff. My name is Andrew Palumbo of Ian Hall Planning Limited and I am the planning consultant for three ten Ronson's Vale Avenue. And I am located at thirty-eight Betty Nagel Street in Toronto. Uh, and I'll just give a very brief presentation on the proposed development. As many of the details have already been provided in the planning justification letter submitted to the committee prior to the hearing. So in short, this is a proposal that contemplates the demolition of an existing detached unused garage in association with the existing rental apartment at the subject site. In order to make way for a brand-new two-story, three-bedroom laneway suite that fronts directly onto the rear lane adjacent to the subject site. Uh, this laneway suite builds upon the existing footprint of the existing detached garage and requires a total of six variances. Uh, three of which represent an improvement to the existing conditions on site. Two of which are purely technical in nature and reflect the existing footprint of the existing garage. And one that is new and relates to the upper story of the proposed laneway suite as it cuts into the angular plain requirement for the subject site. Uh, prior to any formal application submission to the CFA, we submitted a pre-application consultation request to city planning staff. In order to garner their feedback on the initial proposal. And given that this proposal represents a format of housing that the city is actually encouraging, which I, revitalizing an unused and dilapidated rear garage. For a brand-new family-oriented laneway suite, the only comment city planning staff did have was to provide some new soft landscaping on site. In order to address the two soft landscaping variances identified with the initial zoning certificate, uh, considering that there is no soft landscaping at the existing site. And as such, um, the owner addressed this comment and it speaks to the two soft landscaping variances before the committee. Um, which are required to implement the proposed development. And again, this represents an improvement to the current situation of zero percent soft landscaping on the site right now. And this allows for the provision of greenery previously not in place, which has both an aesthetic appeal and aesthetic value and also assists with stormwater runoff during rainfalls. Um, apart from the two soft landscape variances, the parking variance also represents an improvement to the current situation. Because as I mentioned, um, the existing rear garage is actually not used for car parking. And thus, there are no car parking spaces on site available to the existing building in its current form. The proposal provides one integrated parking space within the laneway suite itself and it has direct access from the rear lane. Uh, in addition, all thirteen parking spaces are required for the entire site. Proximity to transit and the city's recent reduction in minimum parking rates across the city further speak to the general notion that less parking and less auto dependency. Is the general direction that the city is headed in this respect. Uh, the two variances that are technical in nature are relative to the existing building separation from the existing apartment building. And the width of the proposed laneway suite. Again, because this proposal is building upon the exact footprint of the existing garage. These variances themselves are technical in nature and do not introduce any new impacts of a planning nature to the surrounding area, they build upon what's already there. Uh, lastly, the angular plane penetration variance is required to allow for a second story on this laneway suite. Now firstly, uh, the second story allows for this laneway suite to be a much more functional, efficient and desirable rental dwelling. As opposed to a bachelor or one-bedroom suite at most, if this were only to be one story. As previously noted, the city encourages family-oriented units as per their growing-up guidelines. And this second story allows for an efficient, functional, desirable three-bedroom dwelling in a non-invasive manner that builds upon and enhances what already exists today. Which represents gentle intensification within the built-up area of the city. Uh, in addition, the proposed development proportionally fits with the existing onsite apartment. Given that all of the windows associated with the lit- the proposed laneway suite are actually facing the rear laneway. Thereby maintaining a level of privacy from the existing apartment building. Furthermore, the laneway suite is in a north-south direction, which allows for the reduction of potential shadows being cast on adjacent properties. And finally, the proposed laneway suite would be located at a T-intersection with another laneway. And proposing a reasonable hiding freeze that will have little impact on adjacent properties which are primarily occupied by detached garages or parking pads. To sum up, this proposal replaces a completely dilapidated and unused rear parking garage. And it completely transforms and revitalizes this building into a functional, efficient and desirable family-oriented rental dwelling. In addition, this addresses two key city mandates relative to the increase in rental housing stock. Which uses a dental, a gentle intensification approach. Which represents development within the already built-up areas of the city as well as reduced auto-dependency. And furthermore, uh, this proposal also speaks to the very recent provincial legislation that is actually headed in such a direction to make this type of development or similar. And as a right permission for residential properties in an effort to increase housing opportunities throughout the province. And again, gentle intensification is a key component of this new anticipated legislation. Again, it's not in place yet, but it's just in line with the direction that the province is headed in this respect. Uh, before I conclude my remarks, I just wanted to quickly speak to the objection letters and concerns that have been submitted to the committee from the existing tenants within the existing apartment building. I am aware that management has reached.
Mister Palumbo, uh, you, your time, your, your five minutes is just about up. Perhaps you could save that and for, as rebuttal.
Okay, fair enough, but I could just, I'll just conclude, I guess, by saying it's my opinion that the proposed development meets the four tests for a minor variance under the planning act. Represents good planning and should be approved by this committee and I thank you for your time and happy to answer any further questions.
Alright, thank you, any questions at this stage, panel? Okay, uh, Alison Chenoweth?
Hello, this is Alison Chenoweth, I live at three ten Ronson's Vale's Avenue, unit seven.
Okay, thank you, go ahead, please.
Thank you, uh, Mister Chair, um, yes, as mentioned. Uh, I have submitted a letter on behalf of myself, my partner who also lives in the building and also co-signed by one of our neighbors in unit eight. Um, we have lived at the address for almost seven years now and we have stated several of our concerns, uh, in regards to the way we building the apartment. Um, starting with the distance between the two buildings, it is three point eight five meters between the two buildings. Um, which is less than half of the seven point five, um, mandatory and, uh, distance between the ancillary building. Um, it also does not account for that below-grade shed in the deck area. That, uh, we have not been informed of any plans for what's gonna happen with that site. Um, this is also gonna impact the access, um, for tenants to the laundry room. Uh, we're gonna lose access to that, um, you will see in the photos where that is located, um, in the letter that we submitted. So there's been no mention of what's gonna happen to the deck attached units three and four. Um, also, I wanna speak to the point about, um, uh, how it's not gonna impact the privacy. But there are gonna be four units that are looking at a flat brick wall out of their window. Um, I don't think that's a really great experience for those tenants and as you can see, the area back there is quite narrow. Um, and we have a lot of questions about retaining the garage's existing walls. Um, it seems unlikely that you're not gonna be able to knock any of those down to get construction equipment back there. The building's height is also a concern for us, um, so our unit actually looks down onto that garage space. And so we have a good sense of how big this is going to be, it's, it's gonna dwarf a lot of laneway suites in the area, I know they're very trendy. It's gonna have a width of twelve point two one meters, the maximum permitted width of a laneway suite is eight meters. Um, and then none of the additional space in this suite is gonna benefit the tenants, it's gonna be a luxury three-bedroom unit with a garage. There is no onsite parking added for tenants who currently have none, despite some assumptions. Actually, many tenants in the building do own vehicles. Um, there's no bike storage added, there's currently no shared storage space planned for the tenants. And most tenants in the building that exist are in bachelor or one-bedroom units with limited or no storage. Um, you'll also see from the photos that we submitted that the branches of tree number one are definitely going to need to come down if there's gonna be a second floor. Um, and there's no mention in the plans of the telephone wires that run along the south side of the garage. Um, we'd like to know what the plans are to account for those tree branches and wires and I'm wondering if the site should be evaluated by City Toronto's Forest Management. Um, the other concern that we have is about the shared maintenance services, so what's gonna happen with garbage recycling? Um, our building is currently only sixty-two percent occupied and our garbage and recycling bins are often full or overflowing. And we have no idea if the new tenants in the laneway suite will be sharing those services. Um, and if they do, they have to pass through a very narrow alleyway that runs along the side of our building that is often covered with debris. Or not frequently cleared with snow or ice in our experience. Um, and we would also like to know how stormwater and drainage will be addressed, uh, with the laneway suite. Thus, why we propose potentially having a green roof as a way to ideally help curb that. Um, so really, we just wanna reiterate that tenants were never approached or consulted about this building. We were never asked what our concerns were, um, we were never asked, you know, if there was any exploration for this being a single story or having a reduced footprint. Um, to see how this might minimize the impact on the building's tenants and our neighbors in the area. So I wanna thank the committee for your time and consideration, happy to hear your questions.
Panel, any questions? Okay, um, Bernard Helen?
Through you Mister Chair, I was unable to locate the last speaker.
Okay, uh, Mister Palumbo?
Uh, thank you Mister Chairman, yeah, just to respond to some of these comments that have been raised, again, just to reiterate.
So Mister, Mister Palumbo, there's a lot of, uh, issues that were raised by Miss Chenoweth that don't concern us. We're, we're interested in the planning, uh, she seems to have a lot of complaints about the, the tenants' concerns, et cetera. Those do not concern us, uh, so I don't think you need to respond to the tenants' concerns about what's gonna happen to them. Uh, their laundry, et cetera, uh, just the variances, uh.
Oh, no, absolutely, I was gonna, I was gonna touch on that.
Trees, maybe, the branches, the, the telephone wires, but that again is, is construction stuff, doesn't really concern us.
Uh, Mister Chairman, actually, but to address that, because in fairness, uh, but Arbor's report was actually submitted, uh, to, to address those trees. Cause that was one of the things that came up in initial, um, pre-consultation discussion and it was, the report was submitted and basically confirms that. Those trees will be protected, it'll have no, there will be no resulting impacts as a result of the proposed laneway suite. So, um, and that's, the, the, those have been filed with the Committee of Adjustment, they are on file, um, in case, uh, anyone wanted to review them. So we don't anticipate any issues in terms of impacted tree branches, so that actually was explored. Um, for the remainder, I guess, um, speaking to the actual proposed laneway suite. Again, this is building upon the footprint that already exists on site today. And that's why the approach was taken to basically maximize and revitalize the space for a much more functional and usable space. And to make way for a three-bedroom, uh, dwelling unit, that is something that is typically encouraged by the city in this type of respect. And again, I'll, one thing I'll clarify with respect to the additional second story, I didn't mention it in my opening statement. But in terms of the actual impact from a height and viewpoints that, uh, standpoint. The, I should mention that the basement level of this existing, uh, three-story apartment, it actually penetrates about half a story above grade. So the second story of the existing apartment building will only really have a one and a half story view of the, the new proposed, uh, two-story, uh, laneway suite. Um, but yeah, otherwise, again, they're very technical in nature, the variances that are being requested along, and three of them represent improvements to what's actually there today. And in terms of, uh, addressing climate change and environmental impacts and such, that's why certain decisions have been made to take a gentle intensification approach. Rather than swallowing up obviously new, um, untapped tracts of land, this is building upon what already exists. Uh, less parking means less auto emissions and also the, the improvements to the soft landscaping on site. Also, to a minor scale factor into that, uh, stormwater runoff, uh, uh, management.
Alright, thank you sir, panel, do you have any questions, uh, Nimrod?
Yeah, if we can put up the site plan, please? So, yeah, on that site plan, at the bottom right corner, there's a landscape summary plan. We can, yeah, and if we can just zoom in there, and it shows an asphalt walkway along. Two areas, and I'm wondering, wh- what exactly is that asphalt walkway leading to? Two areas, and I'm wondering, wh- what exactly is that asphalt walkway leading to? What is it used for?
Are you talking on either, this, through you, Mister Chairman, on either side of the proposed laneway suite?
Uh yes.
As as far as I am aware, those are existing, and like I said, this this actual footprint follows the existing garage, so all those are, I believe, are existing and not, like, there's no new area proposed there.
True, maybe, but what exactly is it for? Or where is it going? Where are people um? Direct from, you know, go- where are they going to? Uh does it, is it needed actually, and can it, can it be turned into uh? Added to soft landscaping area?
Uh I sh- I'm, I've, uh it's, this provides, as far as I'm aware, access to the basement and the laundry facilities. So that's why it's there, it's in place.
Well, there's the asphalt walkway that is along the sideline, wh- wh- what is it providing access to?
So the sides of the garage are existing, uh and the back of the buil- the back of the building is where the laundry has ac- that's is, the uh the asphalt at the back provides the access to the laundry room.
Okay, but on the other side of the laneway suite, th- there's that very large asphalt area, and I don't know where, wh- what it's. Leading to. I guess I'm trying to improve the the soft landscaping and um i- is there a way to uh eliminate some of that asphalt area?
Well, obviously, provide, I it does provide, if you look, it provides access to the existing rear laneway. And I g- and it does, if you look at the back part of the building here, like that decking that you see is the emergency access, so for the building, so. This does provide some form of access to the rear laneway, that I guess that that does exist today, so that's why it was just, I gets kept on the plans. So it does, because it does provide some form of access.
And is there any reason why the asphalt areas cannot be revised to. Uh permeable material?
Permeable material, um I guess that's something that we could, that can be explored, um uh we, the the, we were. In con- um pre-consultation with the city, again, the city planning just wanted additional soft landscaping, uh never really raised the idea of permeable. Uh surfaces, but that's something that could be, I guess, expl- we could explore that with the owner for sure.
Thank you.
As also, just very quickly, so I just go, I'm just trying to flip through notes here, uh it also provides fire access as well, so it's an emergency access for the fire department, as far as I'm aware.
All right, any further questions, Sahir?
Uh I I I think uh uh my colleague, Mister Salmon's comments are quite ac- uh quite uh salient. Um you're gonna be digging up the asphalt in the front of the garage to to construct this new um structure, so. In the process of deconstruction, uh and then reconstruction. Um I I imagine that the asphalt would certainly be um required to be. Removed or it'll maybe damaged and therefore replaced. So my thinking would be that it would be quite appropriate to uh be able to put uh use permeable materials. Uh it would not prevent emergency workers from accessing. But it certainly adds to uh permeability of the soil around the new structure, which I think, by the way. It's it's quite a a a an interesting design and an attractive one. And certainly is a ve- a welcome change from what exists today, so I must commend you on that. Um I think it would just help to have greater porosity of soil. Around the structure, uh wherever you're gonna be digging up, when you replace it. Some permeable materials may be quite appropriate. Um I don't know if it's uh something that one would want to have as a condition, but I think it would be in the interests of. Uh the owners of the property and the tenants to actually have greater permeability. Beyond that, I I think it's a, it's a sound proposal. In fact, the um the, one of the folks who uh wrote letter in concern. With the photographs actually of the structure from the, uh not the laneway side, but the space between the two. Building and the current uh structure. Uh actually shows a need for improvement of the structure, so I I I. I'm glad with the photographs for this, I I've been in in favor of this application. But I would like to see that um at the asphalt, uh especially on the one side, I believe it might be the north side. Of the structure, uh and um in front of the garage entrance. And on the south side, the um constructed of permeable materials.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, do we have a motion? Yeah, Sahir?
Sure, I'll 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 get it going, Mister Chair. Um I I'd like to uh approve the uh application as presented. Um I had initial concerns about uh the. Uh variances number one and two related to soft landscaping, but I think the applicant certainly provided. Uh um an explanation that I find comfortable. Um beyond that, I don't believe there are any conditions. However, I would like, and I'm not sure if I can put this in, that uh. At the the asphalt uh surrounding the structure, at least on the north-south si- and north side, south side. And in front of the garage, be produced of uh uh permeable materials, if um. If that could be added as a condition, I'd like to go ahead and add it in.
So when you say in front of the garage, you mean in front of the uh laneway suite?
Yes, the laneway suite garage entrance.
Okay. All right, do we have a second there? Sahi- uh Nimrod, all in favor? Have your approval, thank you. And that concludes the uh. Entire afternoon list is now five fifty-nine PM.
Thank you, Mister Chair, committee members and uh staff. Have a good evening.